Meeting is being broadcast live, community television channel twenty-five, and streaming on the city's website, cityofSantaCruz.com. If you wish to comment on today's agenda, call in at the beginning of the item you are wanting to comment on, using the instructions on your screen. Please meet your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through the phone. Please note there is a delay in streaming, so if you continue to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity to listen. When it is your time for public comment, please raise your hand by dialing star sign on your phone or choosing the webinar to raise hand on your computer. And I would like to ask, please call roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, Antonia Johnson?
Is it?
Holder?
Did you not hear me? Oh, sorry, here.
Canning?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Meyer? Current camp, Vice Mayor Watts? Could be late. And Mayor Berner?
Is it? The agenda item today that we will be hearing is Climate Action Plan 2030 for members of the public who are streaming this. If Climate Action Plan 2030 is an item you wish to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from council, and then we will take public comment and return to council for deliberation and action. I would like now hand it over to our Sustainability and Climate Action Manager, Vice West.
Thank you very much. Thank, can you all hear me? Okay, great. Um, thank you and good afternoon, councilmembers. As Mayor stated, I'm Vice West, Sustainability and Climate Action Manager. And today I'd like to share with you an update on the Climate Action Plan since I last was in front of you in January of this year. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Are you able to see my screen? All right, very good. I'm getting thumbs up. All right, very good. We're gonna be focusing today on really funding and implementation, but we'll be circling back on targets that we really spent a lot of time on in our last study session. I do want to just acknowledge before we get started, that the land that many of us are on today is native land and where I'm at is the ancestral grounds of the Palaslaspey Upe tribe. And this land is now being escorted by the Amamlo. Okay, um, just wanted to start, make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what the goal is for the Climate Action Plan and what the objectives are for this study session today. So number one, the Climate Action Plan, we want to prepare a CEQA and CEQA California Environmental Quality Act. CEQA Qualified Climate Action Plan that states targets, and we want to determine the year of the equitable pathway to carbon neutrality. So much more on that to come today. For this study session, um, the objective is for you all to give an update on the development progress I was last in front of you in January, and discuss considerations of funding and implementation of that. Um, and please, if I do use any terminology that is unfamiliar to you or any acronyms, I really will strive to do that. Just feel free to interrupt me at this certification. I know this can be a very heavy kind of climate lingo type of presentation, and I'm really striving not to do that. Okay, uh, to start, I'll crush you on the major components of this plan. So working on this with the community since April of 2021, we established values and visions for this plan. We set forth options for goals and targets. Let's tell it our January meeting, circle back on today. We have developed the high-level measures. Those are the topic areas where the emissions reduction should take place. And we have actions, we've developed actions that are the policies, programs, projects, um, that will enable us to achieve both those measures and the goals and targets. All of that is wrapped together. This Climate Action Plan will include a funding and implementation plan, both for us municipally as well as community-wide. I do want to be clear that this Climate Action Plan is a community-wide action plan. It is not just for us as for municipal operations, although that is part of this. And importantly, we have been working with our equity advisors, our Climate Action Task Force, to iteratively develop and apply screening tools at every step of the process. I see that reflected in the actions, the measures themselves. Um, I'm not so over all this, but I will say, we are right here at the end of the phase three on funding and implementation. Um, and between May and July, we'll be drafting a final plan and the CEQA, Health Environmental Quality Act, for the plan. And we are targeting an on-time adoption on August ninth. That will be coming, that next time this will be coming, uh, to the council. So let's jump right in on the targets. If you recall, last time I was in front of you, I presented the options for our targets. And there were two sets of options for targets. Number one, the California Environmental Quality Act target, which would be our legally defensible, uh, target that we would need to achieve. Um, and then we also presented options for aspirational stretch targets that would volunteer. And if you recall, the benefits of stopping CEQA-qualified Climate Action Plan with CEQA-qualified targets is that we are able to develop fresh emissions thresholds for developments. And in turn, those developers get streamlined environmental review costs. So it's a win-win city. It is one of our biggest levers to reduce emissions in development. So we want to have these CEQA-qualified targets. In order to do so, we need to set the greenhouse gas inventory, which we did for 2019. We need to align with state targets, see on the screen here in the upper left. And we need to track our expectations for that target. It is important to remember that with the CEQA-qualified targets, the actions need to be feasible, reasonable, implementable to achieve. And that's important to remember because it needs to be legally defensible. Uh, as was noted in the agenda report, S.A. recommends SC thirty-two target of forty percent reduction by 2030 from nineteen ninety levels as our CEQA-qualified target. Um, we have prepared the measures and the actions and have confirmed that we are able to reach that target. That is what we have presented to the community for discussion. However, we also know for few laps, as well as from community members, that there's a strong desire to go first, acknowledging that the minimum target by the state perhaps going far enough, and that we wanted to adopt aspirational voluntary targets. And there are a variety of targets we could have adopted. We are recommending that we adopt aspirational target carbon neutrality 2035 for two reasons. Number one, the current state's target for carbon neutrality is 2045. However, Governor has directed the Air Resource Board to go back, look at bringing that target 2045 down to 2035, pretty likely. Number two, and I'm gonna show you this graph. Number two, we calculated our science-based target. The science-based target is the reductions that are required for our share of emissions that will help keep global temperatures increased under one point five degrees Celsius, which is the acknowledged tipping point for catastrophic climate, um, impact. And so the aspirational target, carbon neutrality by 2035 that we're recommending, is slightly more aggressive than that science-based target. So we are making this recommendation based on the fact that it is consistent with science and it is consistent with the regulatory direction of this. So those are the recommendations as contained in the agenda report. Okay, and so what is that? Um, if we look at this graph, I'll remind you that the red line is our projected emissions if we did nothing at all. And I'm not gonna go into a lot of depth to explain, but bump this here is because of a change in the permit of electricity by our local electricity source of community energy. It's an accounting kind of mechanism that, that causes bumps. But registered by 2030, our electricity will be a hundred percent renewable, if not sooner than 2030, because of our participation in central community energy. The orange is what state legislation will, where state legislation will drive emissions reduction, specifically around the renewable portfolio standard, which is how clean the grid is, if we're getting cleaner and cleaner because of the RPS. And then secondly, because of fuel economy. As we make those tighter for vehicles, that's also gonna drive. So you see, we get a nice production there. Now where the yellow star is, gray line, yellow star, that's to forty percent reduction from twenty, uh, between twenty, uh, sorry, nineteen ninety and twenty thirty. Um, so that is the target that we're recommending. And if you allowed that line to continue, you'd see we'd hit carbon neutrality by 2045. However, um, we are recommending the aspirational target of carbon neutrality by 2035. This is kind of yellowish line, far left-hand side. You can see there's quite a bit of difference between the current state target and the recommendation of 2035 as the aspirational target. And you can see the green line, which was the science-based target. And we are more, uh, more aggressive, slightly more aggressive than that science-based target. And as I conveyed last time, really, we'll need to, in order to make progress towards the aspirational voluntary target, we're really gonna need to lean into more aggressive measures. We're gonna need to look to new technologies as they come online, for example, carbon capture. We're really going to need to focus in on the carbon sequestration actions that we've specified, as well as the climate economy work. Do recall that for the CEQA-qualified, there's a limited set of emission reduction sources that are counted in that CEQA-qualified plan. Carbon sequestration is outside of that, um, as is our climate economy measure. So those really will be working towards this aspirational. And I'll be sharing those with you in just a minute. So in order to achieve those targets, we need to focus in on these task measure areas. Transportation is the biggest, as you know, sixty-nine percent of our emissions are from transportation. So active transportation, called the transportation electric vehicle, hugely important. Secondly, electric buildings and renewable energy, water efficiency, waste reduction. And then I have carbon sequestration out on the far right side because they is considering being carbon sequestration in as a potential emissions reduction activity or measure. So we are quantifying those in that event, that that will, will happen. Okay, and I won't go into a lot detail about what the emission reduction measures are. We don't, last time, we talked about FOSS, talked about kinds of policies that might need to come forward or that would need to come forward to targets. These are the emission reduction measures that are needed to achieve the SC thirty-two target for the CEQA-qualified target. Um, and again, it really revolves around electrifying buildings because again, we will have a hundred percent renewable energy by 2030, if not earlier, so very clean grid. We also focus in on the transportation measures. Um, see, we're bumping up active transportation by about five and a half percent for that mode share. Active transportation, one percent, I'm gonna circle back on that in a moment. Um, thirty-five percent, twenty-five percent, gas, commercial, uh, electric vehicle uptake effectively. And a fifty percent, um, adoption of electrified off-road equipment, which is basically landscaping equipment, transportation equipment, on water. And really don't need to focus in on wastewater. We're able to get our reductions to the target, um, building, transportation, and reductions in both organic and inorganic ways. So that's, those are the measures that are gonna get us to that SC thirty-two target. But in order to go further, to go towards aspirational targets that we're recommending, in addition to going harder and stronger on the measures I showed you, beating those numbers that I showed you, we also have set green economy actions. And we have fourteen climate restoration actions that are specifically around carbon. You can see the, the green economy actions are really around supporting businesses. Um, it's embedding with, uh, we did a Chamber of Commerce, Kansas City Council, um, focus group and kind of worked through what are the priorities and how, the wording appropriate on, uh, these actions. Uh, their highest priority action is to keep large-scale climate investments and partnerships of local and regional scales that helps businesses with addressing transition. But you can see there are a number of green economy actions, um, that we are recommending. You can also see the final bullet, green economy actions, which is perhaps less obvious business perspective, and that is leverage our city activation platform, which I'm gonna show you a snapshot of at the end of this presentation. Um, leverage that platform and partners to encourage lifestyle choices that function based emissions, including plant-based diets, travel alternatives, and local, providing local. Um, and we also want to explore policy adoption to increase adoption of plant-based and plant-strong diets. Um, so again, looking towards those aspirational targets, these will work towards them as well as a bit more aggressive on measures that I've already presented. And, and again, we are gonna need to be opportunistic, we're gonna need flexibility to respond as technology, new opportunities arise in order to make progress towards that. Since I'm not here in January, we released over a hundred draft actions. Again, those are the policies, the projects, programs that will help us reach those measures and our targets. And so we utilize the platform called Considerate. It's been open for over two months now. We had a hundred and thirty-nine unique users that provided not just their level of support for the hundred-plus draft actions, but also able to have conversations and bring forward concerns or support and really be able to articulate debates, have a public dialogue around actions. Um, after the early priority deadline was finished on Considerate, pulled down all of the implications, and we took a really close look at actions that either had numerous comments, so see that there was a lot of dialogue going on, and those that showed lower level of support. I will say that in general, all actions had fairly high level of support. In fact, none dipped below fifty percent support, which was kind of like our threshold where we really needed to consider, okay, is this gonna be something our community is gonna be able to do? And we didn't have any that fell beyond below that percent threshold. But for those where we had a lot of comments and we had lower rank ratings, we dove into them and looked at why. Um, and this was with the Climate Action Task, Sustainability Team. And we did a little bit of, uh, things to address some of those comments. Many were around equity, um, others wanted to push further. And so we are actually having some upcoming focus groups to hone in on two topics in particular, and that is public transportation and parking. Um, we had a lot of discussion about actions that revolve around those two topics. We heard from many community members that the one percent increase that we were, uh, thinking that we could achieve around public transportation was insufficient. Even recognizing that the city has limited levers because we don't own or control the metro. And so what we have said is, let's have that. And let's bring all stakeholders together. So we have, um, Santa Cruz Equitable Public Transportation, we have the Metro RTC, we have our, our board members, um, from the Metro and the RTC, and a number of other stakeholders who are going to participate in this focus group on public transportation. It's important to remember, however, that whatever might come out of that for the parking focus group, is that we need to be sure that whatever's adopted for the CEQA-qualified plan is achievable. And right now, the one percent, all of stakeholders, um, from the RTC, Metro, and staff are in agreement with the one percent increase truly what's achievable, right? Anything that might come out of those focus groups that goes further for us all to consider would go towards those aspirational targets, right? So we can, we can aspire to, you know, beyond that one mode share increase, but we don't want it part of our CEQA-qualified plan because we don't reach it. It could put us, um, at legal risk. And so we want to make anything that comes out of the focus group be part of our aspirational, uh, target. And so we have a lot more to come on this. We have many, many more focus groups over the month of April. Um, we'll be doing about four different focus groups on building electricity with different stakeholder groups. We have public health and housing we're gonna be talking to, as well as developers, labor, designers. Um, we have, uh, a, a number of stakeholders in building electricity. And then we'll also be doing another focus group down in the class. And so using this Considerate tool was a really good way for us, kind of in a, in a organized, flexible comment. We did also receive some email comments, also considered when we were thinking through the revisions to actions. So that's a major engagement that's happened since this last in front of you from January. Um, so moving forward from the draft actions, those are getting finalized right now. We are developing also concurrently the implementation and funding. So right now, we are conducting interviews with all of our divisions within departments who are relevant to this discussion. Um, we are talking to stakeholders, and we are identifying roles. Is it an enforcement role, a compliance role, supportive, a leadership role, or a monitor role? Um, so we're assigning roles, different departments, divisions, and partners. Um, and I should say that really important, see this little quote on, on the right-hand side. Everyone in the community, all departments, we all have a role to play in this plan's implementation. That's really important for folks to remember. And we're trying to put in place an implementation plan, accountability mechanisms, and activation tools to help folks to be part of that implementation. Um, and figure where it's identifying systems, tools, resources. What's the task is externally? What about funding? Trying to problem solve largest obstacles or risks that we're asking departments to identify. We're trying to, um, put in place equitable, efficient, effective processes as well as the funding plan. And lastly, we would like to tie the outcomes to our health, community well indicator metrics council adopted, uh, in November of last year. Again, trying to weave health policy, everything to do, and have alignment across our. So our approach to the funding plan, this is one table that's really gonna constitute, um, our approach, how we are gonna fund this plan, which I told you last time, community-wide is approaching a one billion dollar implementation cost over the next eight. What we are doing with our council right now is for the key measures and actions. So those are gonna be primarily around transportation, where our biggest emissions sources are, called building electricity. We're going to be, um, developing, we're doing this right now, the funding and the financing that is available. We know that not all the funding's gonna come from grants alone. We need to leverage philanthropy. We need to leverage potentially new revenue streams, which are called out for evaluation in the plan and the actions as well. Um, and then we want to really target in on what is the top funding or finance pathway for the particular action and measure, and give very solid examples of other organizations that have utilized similar funding methods so that we have folks to talk to and discuss. Um, you see in the box on the lower left-hand side, there are already resources that are being put in place right now to help us discover. Um, all the jurisdictions, not all, but many jurisdictions in the Monterey Bay area recently contributed, pooled funds together that are being, going to be held by the Community Foundation as a fiscal sponsor to hire a regional climate project developer and grant writer. This is because we recognize that we, as the small cities in Santa Cruz, likely will be unable to compete on the federal level for federal infrastructure funds. But Go Together's region, it's more likely to secure those funds. So I'm very proud and happy to say the city has committed to this fiscal year, two more fiscal years of contributions to this regional climate project developer and grant writer. And we have a target of bringing in ten million dollars in year one. Now, that's not all the city, that's the Monterey Bay region, on full climate priorities that we have. Very excited about this resource and this collaboration. We also are working internally as part of our grant management strategy to put some resources together for staff, for new grants, and to administer grants, as well as put forward some training so that, you know, folks have, understand what makes a competitive grant proposal and how to execute. So there's really a lot happening in this space right now regarding funding. And we know we are getting well spent for funding that is coming down from the federal government, and of course, the billions that are set aside, um, from the state for climate. So once the implementation and the funding plans are complete, we have already started the draft, our Climate Action Task Force has worked with us to look at other plans and what we like, um, put together the table of contents. We will have a public draft available entire month of June. This draft, very accessible. It will be forty pages. Not gonna be some long, lengthy techno-jargon kind of plan. It's gonna have rich infographic, have layperson language, really highlight, you know, what we need to do and what we've committed to doing. We have a number of technical memorandums that back up this forty-page plan. And if folks wanna go and reference that, they can go do the key slides. We, we will make those available for everyone. But we want to make sure that this plan is accessible, people will read it and that they will embrace it. And we plan to use an online platform, you can see here, it's called Convio, to, um, pour that publicity where everyone can see what everyone else is saying. And it organizes comments, questions, um, and so forth for us so that it allows us to pull that information offline and very quickly address comments, questions. So, um, we're not a hundred percent sure that we're gonna use this platform, but I, I think that we'll probably focus on that. Um, in addition to the draft, and I'll give you the timeline on the adoption plan, we also have a task being developed that's specifically for tracking and reporting. Instead of me going. Instead of me going to all the departments, asking for the data and then conditioning the data spreadsheet and then making graphs themselves, this tool, we will give access to those who are collecting data. They will enter it here and it gives us a very robust platform to track reductions, our progress towards our targets. And we can filter it in a variety of ways, by departments, by digital measures, so forth. So this tool is going to be very important. It also has a public view that will serve as a sustainability dashboard for how close are we towards our target. We know that we should provide that feedback with the community and it can be embedded in our website. You don't have to go somewhere else so folks can see that. But we'll be developing that a couple of months while folks are reviewing the draft plan. And we will also be developing our community activation platform that will launch in September. We have put into the Climate Action Budget, a little bit of funding to get launched this platform. And again, we are getting at a reduced price because we as a Monterey Bay region have vetted all the various platforms out there and come to the conclusion that we should all adopt platforms for consistency. And so we are, the counties, Watsonville and others are doing so. It's called Bright Action and it will allow folks to go and say, what are Santa Cruz's climate action goals? How can I get involved? What can I commit? Can I join a team? Oh, there's incentives. Oh, there's schemes. What's great also, this college action is going to put staff through this tool to recruit people to it, do the social media, which is the stuff that we don't have the bandwidth really to do. And so together, again, going together is really is what has unlocked our ability to launch a platform like this. And frankly, this is, I mean, in the past, I've got like 10 best things you can do for climate. You know, it's just like a fact and it's so much more robust for folks. And it's really something I think our community is craving. So very excited about the launch of Bright Action. And last, found things out, wanted to share with you the timeline to completion. We are nearing the finish line here. At today, we've got really cool youth digital storytelling pieces. There are environmental justice pieces featuring local youth and university students that are coming out. End of this week, we're actually submitting to an EPA challenge, a climate justice video challenge, some of those. And that's our Civic Park fellow has been working on those who's funded by the coastal advocacy, working with us. We also are having education, a learning webinar on heat pump, which is the primary technology that enables building electrification. One of our local companies here want to grant Central Coast Community Energy, it's called Lumina, to develop a tool, very easy tool where homeowners can enter a few things and they can see, okay, what are the costs, what's the rate even, what's my return on investment in very accessible kind of way. So we're going to be co-hosting that webinar on the 13th. We're also going to use it as an opportunity to collect more information for our building electrification roadmap that we're developing currently to climate action plan. In May, we're going to be sitting a couple of commissions. We're going to make that public review draft available for folks to provide their comments on the draft. We will be wrapping everything up and going to a planning commission on July 7th and bringing the plan, the final plan to council August. One thing that's not mentioned here is there is a sequoia checklist that's being developed, a guide that's sequoia threshold piece. And then there's the simple quantification of the emissions reduction. That's all part of the plan itself. That is my update for you and I'm happy to take any questions that you might have on the Climate Action Plan status. Thank you.
Thank you so much Tiffany Wise West. That was, you squeezed it all in, very informative. Let's see, does council member Golda have a question for?
Yeah, I just, yeah, a quick question. But I also want to thank you Tiffany for all that great presentation. I especially like how you were saying the goal reasonable and achievable because sometimes we have big goals and they're not, you know, don't meet goals specifications. It's better to put them as stretch goals. I did have one, it's kind of a random question. So with moving towards building electrification, and I know the governor has made a policy about gas, jet, gas generators and been some gas powered tools. I don't know all the details, I have to say. But one question is, my husband was saying that in San Jose, they're doing a similar thing and they're converting all the fire stations to electric stoves from gas. And they have some things that they need, that they would need a backup generator. And they're running into Red Tape City of that he works for in getting a gas generator to run some things that they will need in the event of a power outage and for, you know, emergency operations. And so I'm wondering, there's like, you know, flexibility within our plan to understand that some of our necessary, you know, like obviously like some things need generator backup and it might have to be gas powered. And so I'm wondering if there's that in the plan somewhere.
It definitely is. And it's funny that you bring that up because I was just talking about this very issue with fire today with our internal meeting. So, yeah, there we have, although we need to address where we can, we have added in language, you know, where feasible in many cases. With that said, and a really great piece of feedback that Fire brought back to us is, well, can you lay out for us state of technologies right now? And then where you're anticipating it will go and when? So it'll give us an idea of when we need to make these changes. And that was a brilliant, got to give Paul Horvath credit for that. That was a brilliant thought. And so we're going to do that. It's not difficult to do it. We've done it already, a couple of the measures, but not all of them. So, yes, you know, the bright, oh, there for solar battery storage to act solely place like a diesel or natural gas gun set. And so, you know, we need to find when that's ready and we spring it online. Now, also, the fire department has indicated the fire admin building would be a great pilot test for that kind of technology where it would, you know, it's not, you know, doesn't have the kind of emergency load that they have fires. So great question, yes, there's flexibility in our plan. But I don't want to take away from the fact that we do need to push also.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome for the question.
Council member Calum Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor Bruner, and thanks so much Tiffany for the presentation and all of the work. I just had a couple of questions. I was going to ask about youth engagement and you shared a little bit about the youth stories, the digital stories. I'm really glad to hear that. I wonder if there's anything more you can share on focus groups and whatnot that you've done with youth groups? I know you've done that in the past, anything in recent months? So I'll just ask all my questions if that's okay, there's not that many. And then in terms of the draft plan review, if you could just share a little bit how we will accommodate for Spanish speakers who will have that, do that review and how we'll outreach Spanish speakers? And what are your thoughts on sort of digital access difficulty and how we can kind of accommodate that?
Okay, thank you for those questions, council member Kalen Tari Johnson. Number one, with engagement, as you mentioned, we had done three focus groups with youth up through January of this year, since that time have continued to participate in our monthly Climate Action Task Force meetings as advisors. Also, I don't know anything else I was going to, oh, yes. We have also participated in both city school, district green schools committee as well. So that happens only three times a year, so we've done that, I think, twice in January. And then also the county office of education has, they call it Greenlit, and that's a monthly meeting and we've been participating in that as well. And there are lots of youth that get time slots to be able to present and ask questions. It's not a full hour. And then last, want to do one more focus group with U C S, both youth, but also staff. We've done, I've done some where I've co-taught classes and kind of used that as a focus group. But we're seeing that we need to kind of have one more and get that staff engagement especially. So we're going to do one more there. So that's youth engagement. Number two, the plans for Spanish are translate that 40-page document and cause it will be very accessible language and not a bunch of technical jargon that will be accessible to folks. As I mentioned, we're also doing a focus group in the beach flat next month, which is going to be super important because really that's, you know, we made available Considerate Spanish and we didn't have anybody do it, right? People don't necessarily come to the website to review stuff, especially. And so it's really important that we have those one-on-one touchpoints in the community, this focus group that we're going to be doing. And we're going to structure it so that it is like a draft and review without having to have that. So that's, that's our, on the side of. And then on digital access, you actually have brought up something that I haven't given a lot of thought, quite frankly, so thank you for raising that. And I will need to get back, like to talk to our equity consultant, our outreach engagement consultant about what that might look like. It hasn't come up quite yet. So if you all have any suggestions on that particular, I'd be happy to hear those also.
Great, thank you. I mean, I'm super excited for the interactive dashboard, but I know some people, that's a barrier. So, thank you so much Tiffany, appreciate all the work.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you, council member Brown.
Mayor, and Tiffany for the updates and all of your work that's going into this really, really comprehensive and ambitious plan. I, so just, I have a question, but before I go ask it, I would say, I can think about ways for increasing accessibility and just having recently talked with folks at the Wayva Vista Center and others in the beach area, it seems like they have some capacity. And I don't want to just offer up our community partners to participate in this, but they have capacity to facilitate. Like I know with the rental assistance, COVID rental assistance, other programs, they provide that. And so they have technology available and they also have people facilitate that. So can like a session or the dashboard together and maybe make it a, you know, an event? I know you as the Wayva Vista program have many, many wonderful ideas. So that could be a way to try to increase that engagement. My question is, a big question related to forecasting around where we, where we believe the state is going. In a couple of the interagents boards, I'm on the regional transportation and the Monterey Bay Air Resources District, come up our conversations around particular agenda items that, and then just talking with staff, there is a move at the state, get more aggressive, but also perhaps take more control over decision-making as we're seeing, for example, with housing development. And so, and that presents some opportunities and also some challenges. And so I just wanted to ask you, while we have you, your thoughts on what that land looks like, what you're anticipating. I know there's likely to be more funding, but also potentially, you know, some things that we'll have to then figure out how to manage, not unfunded mandates, well, potentially. So just wondering what your thoughts are about how that's going to intersect with our work.
Thank you for that question, council member Brown. As I mentioned, the state has directed the Air Resources Board to look at that carbon neutrality target and bringing it down to 2035, which, you know, is a more aggressive target. At the same time, there are a number of unfortunately unfunded mandates that are coming online for people in 2024, and this is something, council member Brown, that may have come up at M Bard. The sunset of gas powered equipment, not being able to purchase them in California any longer, which, you know, really accelerates, I was not really anticipating that to come so soon. And, you know, that pressure not just on our landscaping industry, but the city as a whole and the park department specifically. So, yes, there is, there are mandates that are unfunded that are coming down the pipe. At the same time, as I mentioned, there also is unprecedented funding. And it may not be exactly tied to each of the mandates that are coming out. In some cases, there are, in some cases, there are not. With that said, I've been involved in a number of the sessions with state, the governor's office of planning and research, and a number of other state agencies on how to match up the mandates with the funding, how to simplify, I've really been advocating for is simplifying and providing applications for grants across the state organizations and reporting requirements, very onerous and arduous. It differs by agency. So with all of that said, it does appear to the state references that there's a lot of work to do to kind of shore up funding and also capacity strengths that we all have. And in terms of control over thinking, I'm not 100% sure what you're referencing here necessarily perhaps it is the unfunded mandate. But we continue to stay involved in state legislation. Our lobbyists rely on this kind of stuff. So I, I'm not sure that I can answer your question about how exactly that plays out in our Climate Action Plan implementation, but we have pulled out continuing our engagement with our lobbyists and keeping a pulse and providing comments on state legislation and state grant funding opportunities as they develop. So I'm not sure if that gets to your question 100% and if not, I'm happy to kind of check into this a little bit more.
No, thank you, it's helpful. I, some of this, these things that are, we're hearing about may coming. And so I don't really have a particular set of, you know, concrete I'm asking about. So that was really helpful and I will touch with as more stuff come up. Take your cake, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Please do, M Bard continues to be a key funder for us. As you all know, they funded the electric refuse truck dumpster coming up. You know, I mean, there's a, there's a lot coming from M Bard, so keep heartful. Thank you, council member Brown.
Thank you, council member Cummings.
Mayor, thank you Tiffany for all the work you've been doing over these years. Having been on the Climate Action Task Force, you know, going to those meetings and seeing all the engagement, you know, the long time coming and we're getting close to the finish line. So thanks for all the work that you do and especially the attention you've given to unity engagement in this process. One question I had given kind of where we're at is, the first is around kind of like space and opportunity for new media ideas and how we can incorporate that as we're moving forward. So for example, I know some people have purchased water heaters for their homes that are, you know, more efficient and some of the things that they've, that is, you know, is there a way that the city can help subsidize these, you know, more efficient water heaters? So that one, we're moving away from gas water heater. Two, you know, these are energy efficient water heaters. And so, you know, trying to see where there's subsidies for new technology. And then the second question is kind of opportunities to work with U C S C. For example, the pilot new technology, like there are folks in the engineering department and across many departments where they're coming up with new innovative ways for us to think about like micro grids and, you know, other sorts of technologies that really can help us kind of move on this path of coming up with new ways to conserve. that really can help us kind of move on this path of coming up with new ways to conserve energy and reduce our carbon footprint. And, you know, the relationship between UCS and the city kind of ebbs and flows in different ways. But, you know, there might be opportunities for us to, you know, work with labs on campus and use, for example, as you mentioned earlier, you know, one of the fire department's office buildings as a way of, you know, incorporating new technology and seeing what could work. So I'm just wondering on those two fronts, like summarize all that is, what opportunities are there for new community ideas? And also what opportunities are there for us to partner with university to kind of pilot new technology?
Absolutely. Thank you for those questions, Councilmember Cummings. So first of all, on the building electrification piece, in addition to the four focus groups that we're going to be holding over April and May, that of course will, we, we are counting it as engagement to inform our climate action plan, but really going to be informing the more detailed existing building electrification roadmap. So we have those four focus groups coming up, and that's just phase one of our engagement to inform the roadmap itself. Our intention is to bring a, just a draft roadmap council as a check-in point in September. And then as we identify the near-term policies that we want to put in place, we are going to develop an entirely new engagement strategy around that as well. There's a lot of engagement coming on building electrification, and we know that we need the rebate to make this happen. And we do have rebates that exist right now for state electric water heaters, like you mentioned. There are other technologies and there are other opportunities for rebates through air districts, through Central Coast Community Energy and so forth. So we, you know, we're, we're providing feedback on that. In terms of opportunities to work with UCS, we do have called out a number of actions specifically around health farming, energy, a couple of other, and I think you know that I work pretty tight with UCS on a lot of different stuff. So that is not just an important way to give students and researchers real-world experience, but it actually spans our programs of test. And so me, it's a win-win. I'm always looking for those opportunities. I think we've got that covered in the plan. But I lastly want to pick up on, kind of introduce your question. You said, you know, where's space opportunities for new community ideas moving forward? And that really resonated, and as we're developing this implementation plan, where, you know, we're foreseeing an annual update like we typically do, what we haven't done in the past, kind of give that space on a regular basis once the plan's adopted. So I'd really like to consider that part of our plan, maybe a community discussion or maybe a couple of community discussions leading up to that update. That would also be an opportunity to collect implementation feedback from the community itself, not sport it from a focus perspective. So thank you for questions and for kind of feeding that idea.
Tell my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cummings. Okay, at this point, I will bring it out for public comment for members of the public who are streaming this meeting. If this is an item you want to comment on, now is the time to call in using the instructions on your screen. The item that we are on is Climate Action Plan twenty thirty. Raise your hand either by dialing star nine on your phone or selecting raise hand in the webinar controls on your computer. When it's your turn to speak, you will hear an announcement you've unmuted and the timer will then be set. I will go out to the attendees and the first hand raised is the name I am watching.
Yeah, hi. Even the IPCC admits this is of lesser priority than a great many issues facing humanity. Never forget, the number one concern is always the human condition, and it has been the exploitation of cheap energy with the Western values of liberty and capitalism that have done the heavy lifting and producing the continuous benefit to the highest priorities, which are always poverty elimination, adequate food, medicine, et cetera, and to the massive betterment of the human condition in many other countless ways. Let's not screw that up. California has the toughest emissions targets to achieve in the world. Question those who would make them even tougher, then question them again. Climate change is a total win-win proposition for every politician justifying no limit save the world mandates without any possibility or necessity, or even, well, of proving that any of their extreme actions taken actually will achieve any global control or even help more than harm. I would remind, because it takes decades to actually evaluate climate. I, I would remain, remind after decades of trying to go renewable, fossil fuel still represents eighty-four percent of all the world's energy use and ninety-seven percent of transportation. It's not because of a lack of trying, it's just not that easy. And issuing totalitarian mandates of huge CO2 reductions be done in just eight years is very risky in itself. The same people who want to go full green will not allow the like thousand percent more mining of the materials needed to massively build out green infrastructure, and they're not too fond of nuclear power either. Future energy needs will also be far greater. They always are, not less. Of all the adopted leftist agendas, sustainability has long-term legitimacy, but it is too important to be hijacked by the likes of leftist AOC, Bernie, the New World Order globalists, et cetera, getting the greatly enlarged maximum inflammatory injustice of urgency and the maximum predictions of doom and hysterical fear-mongering. Please, no hijacking to support or other leftist dogma issue. The moronic phrase climate justice is a tell here. Those who actually care nothing about individual rights, our constitution, practicality, and the collateral damage to the human condition instead have their false claims of injustice and virtuosity powering their central authority mandates to greed, the acquisition of power and control in mind. Scientific grants aren't awarded for claiming non-emergent. Fear heading by progressives like the sprung Hitler-like angry-faced child Greta Thunberg for AOC, the verisimian dangerous anarchist simpleton progressive congresswoman really alarms. There is serious scientific opinion against the notion that the science is settled as to the certainty that a save-the-world critical emergency exists, absolutely requiring such rapid radical risky mandate action just the next eight years. Lots of lies exist and the narrative is muddied. Note the desire to mount a massive propaganda effort. Lastly, I don't want to be too offended, but this how I feel, the stomach turner is type simply cannot keep their hands off of children. Similar to the indoctrination, not education, teaching of six- and seven-year-olds about various sex options, they always seek to indoctrinate the vulnerable to their narrative as early as they can. It's a kind of fifth column pedophilia. Keep the Girl Scouts and religion out of it. If actions were sane, rationally derived to, well, through thought, obviously to the human good promoting type ideas, propaganda, fear-mongering, uneven legislation wouldn't be needed to gain support. Consider getting a lot more objective counseling. Make sure your priorities just go actual abilities and consent are considered.
Okay, we have the next. Next name is Pauline Seals. Go ahead and unmute yourself and it's your turn for public comment.
This is an interesting diatribe I follow. I'd like to say thank you Tiffany and Justin and Sandy, and especially because you've been more at the forefront of the climate change than everybody on the council. The goal of zero emissions by twenty thirty-five, I applaud that. My group has been pushing for twenty thirty for a long time, but that would have been incredibly difficult. And hopefully this will all work. There is a lot to be done, but that's been acknowledged. I like the choice of the Bright Horizons platform because working with other cities and with ecology action makes a lot of sense. So I, as you know, I'm part of the Climate Action Task Force. I heard several new things today, several things I've heard before, but the new things are all good. Thank you.
For your comment. And if there are any other members of the public who would like to comment on our agenda item today, Climate Action Plan twenty thirty, please raise your hand by dialing star nine. And I see the name Kyle Kelly.
Hey all, this is Kyle Kelly. Thank you Dr. Wise West for the presentation on the Climate Action Plan. It's been really great to see that coming together. I, I do, I do want us to keep pushing on transportation and land use. Climate scientists, partly overall, know that it basically outlined, like we can change our cities to meet what we need and actually reduce our biggest source of emissions, which is from transportation. That means bringing people back into the city, you know, allowing the thirty thousand commuters that come here that live in the city. And I, and it is a basically free policy to actually change and allow for more people to live within the city. Unlike everything else that we do for fleets and waiting to electrify all cars within, within the city and hoping that we're going to solve traffic while also buying the car. So I would love to get to a walkable, bikeable community that connects us with the train back to the rest of the state. So anyway, I just want to say, big support. Thank you. Thank you staff so much. Here's to, here's to getting climate action done.
Thank you for your comment. Your other attendees, now is the time to call in. Don't, any other hands raised? Okay, so at this time, I will close public comment and bring it back to council to provide feedback. And this, since this is an item to review the Climate Action Plan and no action is being recommended at this time, it was more an update. I do want to thank you, Wise West, for highlighting most equitable path to carbon neutrality and the partnership and the work that's been done since our January eighteenth meeting, I believe it was, mid-January. And so our next step, or your next steps, there will be a webinar on education and four focus groups, different categories. And how would members of the public get information if they were interested in a focus group?
Thank you for that question, Mayor. We'll be providing that on our website and we will be doing targeted outreach to have, believe it or not, almost a thousand people contact list. And we have them categorized by different groups, and so we'll be doing direct outreach also.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Goldar, do you have any feedback? Hey Wise West. Councilmember Brown? Back thumbs up, two thumbs up. Councilmember Kalentari Johnson? Councilmember Cummings?
Just, I think the one thing I might add is that to Seal's point that she brought up, you know, how there's a number of folks in the community who would really like to see, you know, like to see a more aggressive plan. I think it would be great for us just to, you know, have, and I know this is something happening, but just remind the community that we will be providing them with updates on kind of where we're at with our goals. Just so that if we're, you know, if we're actually moving more quickly than we anticipated, making sure that we're letting the public know that we're, you know, on track or we're off track and, you know, what we can do to help improve that and just continuing to keep everybody updated on the efforts that we're making to really take seriously and try to meet our goals and actually go above and beyond our goals.
Would that be seen in the Cap Dash tool that you spoke about?
Yes, Mayor. Folks can always go on their own time Cap Dash to see where things are at. But then we also will be doing that annual update to council. And I like the idea of having kind of a way, feedback mechanism in advance of preparing that. So I think we'll have a couple of different ways for folks to do it on their own time or to participate more formally.
Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you very much. That does conclude this study session. Thank you so much for your presentation and this meeting is now adjourned. We will return at four thirty for our special meeting on our district map. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Is here and available. Sure, would you mind turning on your camera? Or announcing that you are here. There we go.
Hello, city council members. Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And here I will be giving instructions on how to call in, and if you could relay that as well, that would be great. Okay, so if you wish to comment on an agenda item today, you'll need to call in at the beginning of the item you are wanting to comment on using instructions on the screen. Are the instructions in Spanish on the screen?
No.
They're not. So we will need to make sure we, we can get that information out. Mute your television or streaming device once you call in and listen through your phone. Please note there is a delay in streaming, so if you need to listen on your television or streaming device, you may miss your opportunity. When it's time for public comment, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine on your phone or selecting raise hand in the webinar controls on your computer. Here, be here. Is there any of those instructions you'd like to relay in Spanish?
Sure.
I would now like to ask her, please call roll.
Here, Councilmember Kalentari Johnson?
Is it?
Sure.
Here?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Brown?
Here?
Mary?
Here?
Mayor Watkins?
Here? Present, thank you. Our first agenda item this afternoon is public hearing, receive input from the community regarding the selection. regarding the selection of a district map and election point. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item you wish to comment on, now is the time, call in using the instructions on your screen. The order will be a presentation of the item by staff, followed by questions from council. We will then take public comment and return to council. Sure, is there a need to translate that?
I think we're good right now.
Go. Let me know as well. Stop at any point. Or repeat anything. So at this point, I would like to hand it over to Casey Himard, I see here, for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Brunner. Thank you, Mayor Brunner. And actually, I'm going to immediately give over to the city's demographer, Dr. Doug Johnson, National Demographic Corporation, to do a presentation.
Thank you and Mayor, members of council and the public, it is a pleasure to be with you again. I'm going to share my screen and walk through a presentation. So, as you recall, had two prior hearings that were an introduction to this issue and an introduction to the rules and demographics of the city and the idea of the change. We're going to review that a little bit. Really, today's session is about the first set of draft map. I do want to emphasize that are the first set of draft maps. It's not final, they are certainly open to revision, to new options, new map. But the, the goal of these maps is really get the discussion. And as noted on the agenda, we're starting with the six districts options and then there'll be a later item on seven districts. Welcome back to the thing behind that. That, let me jump in. First of all, for those that didn't listen in on the earlier hearing, and I do want to remind folks, we are looking at a change in how the council is elected. So right now, we have what are called at-large elections by elect. Everyone runs for however many, the top vote getters are elected. If people do some research on this, they may come across what's called from district or residence district. That's where elections are citywide, but the candidates have to live in a certain district. There, I think we're only down to two or three cities left. In part because under the California Voting Rights Act, those are treated the same as an at-large election. There's no protection from that system. The only safe harbor under the California Voting Rights Act, where plaintiffs are not allowed to bring litigation against the city, is by district election. Either entirely by district system or districts, citywide elect. Both are safe harbors. But that's what we're looking at. This whole process is all about the city transitioning from citywide at-large elections by district elections where candidates will need to live in the district they want to represent. Only the residents of that district will vote and elect. This is an extensive process. The city has been doing a lot of discussion and outreach and meetings on this topic. We did start back in August, September with initial hearings. As I mentioned, to introduce the issue, those did not have draft maps in them. We actually received the census data from the federal government in August and then California actually adjusted that data to move the state prison population, prison location to their last known home addresses. We really got that official data for this process at the end of September. So we did work on draft maps, which have been posted to the project website quite a while now. And then this is the first of two hearings today and the next one is currently scheduled for April nineteenth to talk about these maps and like to reaffirm what I said, this is just the initial set of maps. Certainly open to direction and request. Bring those maps, post those maps a week before the next spring, currently scheduled. After these hearings and after the council selects their preferred map, there will be the ballot measure, I believe it's going to go on the June seventh ballot, where voters will be asked to decide whether they prefer a seven district. This is where the mayor rotates among the council. Or six districts, the citywide elect mayor. And then the city will have its first election by district, the first set of districts this November. Welcome back to that issue of sequence of when later on. Want to hit the, the reason for scheduling the two hearings today, one on six districts and one on seven, is that as everyone knows, currently there's seven council members rotating mayor. And thus, that's the next hearing that we'll get into is the options. They would draw maps that fit in their current system. And the council has voted to put a measure on the ballot, which is six districts. The thing for today is emphasize that the reason we split them is that we're looking today to start the process of deciding on the best six district map and to decide on the best seven district. The debate on whether six or seven is better is really better held in the context of that ballot measure. That's not the goal of the night. Why they're listed as separate. You will come out of this process with two maps. A preferred six district map, preferred seven district maps. We really want to get good input specifics of the maps rather than six. So with that introduction, I'm going to jump into the rules and of how lines get drawn. There are really three categories of rules and goals in this process. The first, the left is federal laws, the requirements have to do under federal law. Number one here is equal population. And this is a tough one. It is very, very strict. That using twenty twenty census data as adjusted by the state of California, you have to have almost exactly the same number of total people in each district. There's a couple of percentage plus or minus margin to avoid splitting a neighborhood and that kind of thing, but it really is a very strict requirement. One of the questions that's come or comments that come up a lot in the intensive input we've already received is, you know, why is this here neighborhood combined with that neighborhood or why does this line end up here? Almost always when those lines end up in a place that doesn't, isn't a natural neighborhood boundary, it's because of the equal population requirement. Neighborhood that's trying to be kept together is big, be a district by itself or it's too tall and has to be. So when folks are looking at the maps, they always need to remind that equal population requirement. That taking something out of a draft map, of one district in a draft map, also means you have to put some other people into that district from somewhere else so that we can set equal. So that's a lot of information. I won't go into that much detail on the other criteria, but did want to emphasize that since it does, it is the explanation for a lot of the questions. Outreach effort so far. Other federal laws are, you have to comply with the Federal Voting Rights Act. In the context of Santa Cruz, that really means being the beach flats area united and together. Not large enough to be a district all by itself. And the Latino and African-American and Native American and Asian-American that the city are not large enough to already district, already of a district. We're not looking. But under the law, we do need flats area, neighborhood in. I'll show you a map. And at the same time, no racial carryman. Race can be a consideration, but it cannot be what the law calls predominant line map. Not supposed to choose a map because it has a twenty-eight percent district where, say twenty percent where another district is twenty-five. It's all about neighborhood. Those are federal laws. The state has new rules. These just took effect in twenty twenty called the Fair Maps Act. It's the middle column and it says, these are prioritized. Number one, districts have to be continuous. It can only cross water where there's a road or a bridge or a ferry, into the law. Number two, the district should, to the degree possible, avoid dividing neighborhoods or what the law calls communities of interest. And that's an area that has a shared interest either demographically, socially, or in terms of city policy. When that community benefits from kept in one district. Number three, the district should follow easily identifiable boundaries, such as streets, rivers, major street, rivers and like that. And number four, the district should be compact. State defines as not bypassing one group of people to get to a more. The state also bans districts being drawn or a map being picked in a way that favors or discriminates against a political party. That one's pretty easy. Just don't have political data in our database. We're not looking partisan data. So those are the requirements. We have federal requirement, we have state requirement. You have multiple maps that meet all those requirements, then courts have approved a set of additional principles. These are goals, they are not requirements. Two things, and some of these are only applied to redistricting or on, but when you're redistricting, you can try to minimize the number of voters shifting election years. That doesn't come in now because when you're districting time, everyone voted. One that does factor in at this phase is you can, to be possible after you meet all the statutory requirements, can respect the voters' choices in terms of trying to avoid putting council members together. The idea here is let the voters decide which council members have a re-election rather than the lines dictating that, hey voters, you cannot reelect this person. Again, this is a goal, it's not a requirement. You can also consider future population growth. Within the population margins I mentioned earlier, so you can't consider it a lot, but a couple percentage. Then the other one that will come up next time when you are redistricting after the thirty census, is you can try to keep the core of existing districts together. So the people who have worked together on the past campaign for a given district continue to work together and don't fight it up. This is why this first time through the process is so important. Because you are setting out the districts, while they will be revised every ten years, these districts will be the core basis that those revisions are made on. So that's a lot of rules. It is a complicated process. There are a lot of things to be balanced. But we've already seen feedback in the city that people are wrapping their heads around it and giving us very good. Mentioned the Federal Voting Rights Act and the geographic concentration. This map, the blues and purples are very low. Those are less than twenty-five to thirty-five percent of the city block showing in dark blue and purple. The city blocks that are yellow, green and red are where the majority of the population. Most city blocks only have a few people, so the scatterings and reds don't really impact the demographics of this. But you can see down in the beach flats, we have a neighborhood that has a higher, much higher concentration than our fountains. That's why I talked about that neighborhood. Similarly, as you may recall from the past presentations, there's not nearly as many African-Americans in that area, but there is more of a concentration of Africa than elsewhere. And the other protected class population that does have significant numbers in the city, Asian-Americans, and they are concentrated. To the degree that. That's really our Voting Rights Act. Those of you that have looked at all the demographics we put out about all the maps, know that we look at a lot of data, renters, education levels, age levels. So we can generate maps such as this one of the percentage of renters area. Can see the data is not city block by city block, it's for whole neighborhood or what they, what census calls block group. But it is somewhat handy if, if folks are interested in looking for how many districts have a majority of residents for renters, they can get that kind of data off this demographic sheet. And actually, all of the data that's shown in the sheet is also available in the online mapping. So with that, I will jump into the maps and I'll go through these really quickly, but I'm happy to come back in more detail and hopefully folks have taken the time over the past few weeks in these posted to look at them in more detail. Well, I'm showing them in static images on this app on the city website and linked on here is a, what we call an interactive review map. And if there are detailed questions, I'll jump to that because that lets us zoom in. Enter an address, you can switch over to satellite view, all kinds of, kill buddy. But we'll start off with six oh one, or three maps altogether that have six. Six oh one, you can see highly compact district. Really, you get regional squares now. With a north, northeastern district one, really we're up on both sides of the freeway. Then South Water Street, District Two, both of which are bordered by the river. Nice, easily recognizable boundary. There's a little bit more population east side of the river than is needed to make two districts. So District Four picks up that last bit, essentially below Beach Street. And then comes over, gets the pier and inland there up to Mission. And goes over to Bay Street. Can see District Six then is the west side. Three and five are up above Missions Coast Road and up. Six oh two, it's four districts down to the ocean fund. This does have the result, a couple of commenters noticed this, which I was happy to see. District Three has what looks like an odd tension going west. I see downward, it says Woodrow Avenue, each there actually is green and part of district. The only reason for that is that we have to follow census plot. Does the geography that gives us the population divide them up, then we don't have official population. What the census bureau drew is one giant census block that goes from where it says West Cliff Drive all the way down and around. So there's no conscious policy choice saying District Three should extend along the west of Columbia Street. That's just forced by the block yard. But you can see this is less of a square and blocky approach and more of a extend from the beach up road. So we do again get a District One in the northeast around the freeway. Get the north of High Street, much more focused District Five. District Four in the, really in the center of this city down to the, down the street, I'm sorry, down to the beach. And then District Three taking the west side of Bay Street, what we get down to. District Six in this one does end up kind of an unusual combination. It's the west side of the city. Graphically, it looks pretty good, but as has been noted by a couple of commenters, it is a curious mix of different neighborhoods on that as it goes west side upwards. And then the last map to show you in this six map set is six oh three, which is just a slight changes from the original. So generally, close but small tweaks. Do want to emphasize too, the goal of these maps is to show, get the discussion going. There's certainly revisions possible, then as long as we keep the population adjusting for like maybe appropriate. The other thing just to touch on briefly is on the PDF maps that are posted to the project website, there is election sequencing. And now that these are going to district elections, some of the districts will be up one election cycle. The first ones will be up in twenty twenty-two. Other districts will be up in twenty twenty-four. So, once the council ultimately picks a six district map and a seven district map, it will need to also choose which ones are up in which year. This can be a very complicated calculation. So we tend to come back to this once we're down to final map or final map. But I'm happy to discuss it earlier, wish. The one key thing to keep in mind is that there's no change, regardless of which map is chosen or where council members end up, there is no change to anyone's current, I'm sorry, current. All the current council members will serve the remainder of their current term, regardless of which map is chosen. These maps only pack council members once it's time to run for reelection. I'm happy to come back in more detail on that, but it can get very convoluted and hard to follow, have a bunch of maps like. With that, the goal of this hearing is to talk about the six district maps, see what residents and ultimately the council members believe is the best map. And then, as I mentioned, get back on what should be changed in those maps before you go back for next. And then I do have this quick reference slide that I'm happy to put up if you want to see the maps side by side. These are the same maps, obviously, just side by side. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have now or after public comment.
Thank you so much, Doug Johnson. We did receive questions from some constituents. And one of the main questions on this, the six district map, was the separation of the Seabright area and six oh two seemed to keep that north-south area, neighborhood, community of interest together, and the other two didn't. Were there other variations that you looked at in terms of all the requirements federally?
Not yet, but that's exactly the kind of feedback we're looking for, which is to figure out which pieces of the maps make sense and which don't. What we often come up with is, let's use left-hand side of this map and the right-hand side of that map, and then you see, figure out how to put those pieces together. So it's certainly excellent feedback and, and we, if there is a preference for one of the other maps, try to modify it, could see right others.
And then, after all the questions you received today from council members and members of the public, will you return with some answers at the next April public hearing? Or do you hope to kind of address some of those now in terms of map configurations?
In terms of questions about the maps and the rules, I definitely want to answer those now. In terms of drawing revised map, we'd probably come back to those well before the next hearing. We want to get those revised maps, look at them, react to them.
And, and last question, do those revised maps have to be posted again in seven days before the April hearing?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
I, I should note too, that if residents want, there is a link on the city website to try their own hand drawing maps as well. So we do certainly encourage that. It takes a couple of minutes to figure out how to do it, but once you figure it out, it's pretty straightforward, and there are some videos.
Wonderful, thank you. Hi, council member coming?
I'm wondering for the purpose of discussion, if we can have the maps on the screen so we can kind of look at them as we're having this conversation. And then I guess, I'm wondering, one of the questions I have is, so it's six oh one and six oh three, I'm just thinking in terms of demographic similarities and similarities within kind of neighborhood impacts and needs. Like the ocean corridor shares a lot common with the beach flats. And I see that in six oh one and six oh three, there's kind of like this downtown kind of beach area, and then it extends kind of way over Seabright. And I'm just kind of, and I'm just curious about why that's the case, and whether there's any kind of way that map could be drawn in such a way that the downtown beach area and like lower ocean one area, and then the kind of Seabright area. Because I think that also gets to kind of what we see in six oh two, which is kind of see that Seabright's more intact, but then also just thinking about the beach area, the ocean corridor there being kind of kept within the downtown flats kind of area.
Yes, certainly. As we think about taking areas out of certain districts and into other districts, there's a lot of flexibility, challenges for each area we take out. But certainly right now, like in six oh one, four and six really split waterfront to the length of the city. That could be rotated. One of them could become higher, entire waterfront. The other one then become kind of inland from the law department. So Seabright by itself isn't big enough, its own district all by itself, but certainly the lines could be readjusted to that neighborhood together with this past. But that could certainly be, that's the kind of thing we're happy to draw is, but if there's just one coastal district, that would be more of the somewhat inland coast areas.
Yeah, I think that would actually probably be even worse. My opinion, because there's different competing interests as you move along the coast from kind of more affluent large homes on the west side to low income and the beach flat there, and then you get to more like, you know, vacation rentals in the Seabright area. But, but I guess that leads to another question, which kind of, you know, what are some of the, I know population driver and obviously like can't split up beach flats neighborhood based on kind of what you said, but it also seems like when you look at demographic, like the beach, the ocean corridor has a higher, seems like has a higher population Latinos versus other areas of the city. And that sounds like one of the drivers of not splitting up flats area. And so I guess part of what I'm interested in understanding is, you know, is there then a is there a driver for keeping kind of that ocean to beach flats corridor intact? And so instead of, for example, six oh two kind of spreads that District Four kind of north-east, but rather than that, having it spread a little bit further south against the one, not going into Seabright area, but having it kind of squeeze into two, and then having parts of one be incorporated to area two. So these are just, I guess this is less of a question and more of a suggestion of that, you know, when we think about populations of renters and we're looking at demographics in terms of Latino population, like that corridor, pretty heavily renter, I believe, of a single socioeconomic, of a similar socioeconomic class and demographic, so there might be you know, the, a reason for why we should keep that intact versus kind of picking four and shifting it over in Seabright areas, which splits up Seabright, then also really kind of breaks apart this continuous corridor that has similar interests.
Yeah, I'd be happy to come up with a revision, you know, we really use the river as a long, I read all three of these maps, but as you know, the demographics on the two sides of the river are not that different, especially as you get closer to the coast. Then we can certainly do a version that together.
Thanks. Yeah, and I guess the last comment I'll make is, I say that because, for example, in the summer months, Ocean Street has a lot of traffic, that traffic all goes into flats. We're trying to get boardwalks, so those impacts are shared by the people who live within those areas. And so keeping that as one district might be helpful so that whoever's representing that district have a strong say, given the impacts that those people face in those areas. And I guess there also could be the argument, want more representative that have a say over that corridor, but you know, just putting that out there is something to think about. Those are my comments.
Great, let's see. Council member Myers, have any questions before we go to public comment?
Thank you, Mayor, I do not at this time, thank you.
Council member Goldner, questions?
I don't have any questions. I have a comment, can I just say, my initial, I wasn't, I'm not prepared to make any decision about this, but after listening to the presentation and looking at them side by side, and knowing like possibilities, for me, having lived in different neighborhoods, like the right side of six oh two seems to make sense, and the left side of six oh one seems to make sense from, like, you know, like neighborhood, but that's just my initial, I'm definitely not prepared to make decisions tonight.
Thank you. I would say that does align with some of the emails that I did in terms of six oh two, map six oh two and map six oh one comments regarding that people felt were communities of interest. And if the left side and right side mesh together. Vice Mayor Watkins?
You know, the only question I would maybe ask is if there's an opinion on it. Is there a benefit of having, sort of looking at six oh two, for example, on the left side, how it does kind of merge the different districts? So there is a little bit more of a spectrum of representation, and I'm just wondering if our demographer wants to speak to that at all?
Sure, this is an issue that comes up all the time. And it's a very good question, there's no right or wrong answer, really a neighborhood by neighborhood question. So if there's, speaking generically, not to the comments of Santa Cruz, but if there's an area that, for example, has never elected, never been a council member from that area, that tends to be good to put that area together, that they can be heard and finally gets elected. I don't know that that's really true here, but you would probably know that better than I would, sir. If there's an area that has always been fairly well spoken and gets the vote out, has no problem getting the attention of council on their issues, they're probably better off being divided, so they still have two or even three council members who are directly accountable to the neighborhood. Obviously, each voter would vote for one, but they have a neighborhood meeting, you'd have two or three council members. It dilutes their voting strength in terms of the odds of them electing someone from that neighborhood, because they're split two or three. But if they're able to make their vote heard and get attention to their issues, they're probably better with more. That comes up most often with large, like, sun city retirement. Yeah, when you have an off-cycle April election and still turnout is ninety-nine percent, you don't have to be united in the district to be heard. So that's kind of the spec, neighborhood by neighborhood side, and it's certainly expected that certain communities benefit from being kept together and other communities benefit not. In part, because the key thing for everyone to remember, the council I'm sure has top mind, it still takes four votes to pass any. So it, so it is, having a consolidated district makes it possible that your voice is heard, but being divided up is to get a policy adopted.
That's helpful, thank you.
Council member Brown, do you have any questions?
Mayor, I have one question I wanted to ask now, and then I thought I'd reserve my question for after the public. In terms of the, but since we're looking at the maps and I'm talking about it, the, the city division district requires that it's based on population. And there, know that across the, there are different levels of turnout, which I mean, and I understand that's a, that's a factor in any election, but in district election, where some districts end up having a much lower number of voters electing their council members. And so I understand that there's imbalance and it's not really much done, but I'm wondering if in your experience, where districts are drawn, there have been, where there is such a significant imbalance that it of, if anything, nothing else, the district boundaries. But I'm just thinking about UCS, and the fact that that district is going to have, no matter how it's drawn, but if it is all in one district, it's going to have a much lower voter count. So just wondering how that's in your experience?
Sure, so traditionally, this doesn't really apply to university scenario you have here, but traditionally, that's actually viewed as a benefit of district elections, because traditionally it's the historically poorer, more heavily immigrant, generally low turnout neighborhood. It benefits from going to districts because their turnout rate is low, their voice, citywide, their, their voices get swung. Now that they have a district, they can be heard and have a seat. Even though their turnout tends to stay relatively low. So that, that element tends to be viewed as a benefit, but you're exactly right. I don't think you'll see this kind of extremes in Santa Cruz, but you know, there are congressional districts, for example, where inner LA, members of Congress will get elected with fifty or sixty thousand votes, because there's so many immigrants, turnout rates low. Whereas in, say, South Orange County, it's two hundred and fifty. So those do get those disparities without a doubt. Where it's driven by area that hasn't been heard, that's a benefit. Where it's driven by dynamic like a university, we also see with military bases, that that is also a challenge, not really benefit. But we have, we have a couple of clients where military base size council district. Of course, not only, well, they almost all registered in their hometown. Active-duty military are barred by Military Code of Justice from running for office, so we have to get very creative in order to find someone who can fill that. So it is a, it is a challenge.
Council, okay, looks like that concludes council member questions at this time, so I will take it out to public comment. For members of the public who are interested in commenting on the selection of a six district map and election sequence, raise your hand either by dialing star nine on your phone or selecting raise hand in the webinar on your computer. When it is your turn to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted and the timer will then be set to a minute.
May I translate that to Spanish?
Yes, please, I was just looking for you. And we will have Peter Becher translate in Spanish.
Buenas tardes, y ustedes quieren comentar ahorita sobre la distribución de los seis distritos de la ponencia que acabamos de discutir. Lo que usted tiene que hacer es que con su teléfono presione asterisco nueve para levantar su mano, o si usted está en el computador, levante la mano con el icono de la mano. Gracias.
Okay, first caller, phone number ending in nine six four two. Hi there.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm going to, I'm going to pass because I was having trouble with my computer, so I went on my phone. But now I'm back on the computer and I have raised my hand, so I so I'd like to talk using the computer. so I'd like to, uh, talk using the computer.
Okay. Our next caller, our member of the public with their hand raised is Catherine. Go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself or unmute on the webinar controls. Hi, welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, couple of comments here. Um, I think that it's really important to, um, let's see, I'm looking at map six oh one, which I think is best for residents living on the west side, because the other maps, um, we as households will lose our vote to the UCSC block if we're included in the, um, UCSC district. And so six oh one is the best in that regard. And then my second thought is that I think it is important to keep the beach area and the downtown area, the two primary commercial districts, in, as a, as a combined interest. And whether that goes to Ocean Street, as had just been discussed, maybe that makes sense too. But I think it is important not to divide the beach area from downtown. And finally, the point that was made earlier, keeping Seabright as a district is important. Um, so the, the right side of six oh two looks good for Seabright, um, but it looks terrible for, uh, households that would be swallowed by a UCSC. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Your comment. Our next, uh, hand raised is the name Rafa Sudanfeld.
Yes, uh, thank you very much. Um, my comment, um, has to do with, um, really the spirit of the, um, district elections, you know, um, we're responding to, um, a potential lawsuit alleging that we, uh, have an inadequate process to ensure minority representation on the city council. And it seems to me like the best way for us to, uh, ensure minority representation on city council would be to have as close to a minority as possible. Um, so I wanted to really echo the comments that, um, Councilmember Cummings made earlier about trying to, um, connect, uh, the Beach Flats area and the Ocean, uh, Ocean Street area, uh, which, or Lower Ocean area, which have a higher concentration of, uh, Latino voter. Um, in the hopes that, that, you know, we really, uh, honor the spirit of, of this redistricting process to try to ensure that we have, um, Latino representation on our city council. So I hope that we get to see another map, um, that tries to, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next, uh, member of the public is Vivian Vargas. Hear me? Yes, welcome.
Um, so as a former Latino Affairs Commissioner for the City of Santa Cruz back in two thousand and eleven, when uh, district maps were being considered and the lawsuit happening, um, I was, of course, interested in Latino, Latinx representation. So when the post-maps came out, I looked at both of them carefully, and what I kept seeing was that, um, voter registration of, of this, of the council districts in all of the maps, uh, but not, um, able to form a, a majority. And then I learned of all of the reasons why the maps were written as they, um, and in Beach Flats, the voter registration for the Latinx community is, uh, seventeen percent, but for the non-Hispanic light community, it's seventy-three percent. So I became a bit frustrated, um, seeing as how this is the way district maps are, and also the origins of the lawsuit were supposed to be Latino, or Latinx representation. And then I remembered, or then I considered, uh, percentages is not destiny, as we can see by our own city council, uh, uh, racial, uh, percentages from the census twenty twenty does not determine, you know, uh, the representation of, uh, council members on, on our city council. So what I feel is that, looking at all of the maps, perhaps maybe to, uh, answer the initial, um, uh, argument that was brought up, why we had to, uh, ensure Latinx, uh, representation, is maybe we need a comprehensive study on why there is no Latinx representation in the City of Santa Cruz. What are maybe systematic, um, protocols or things that are in our city that not help support Latinx representation? And, uh, so I think if we can spend the money and the time for a comprehensive plan to deal with homelessness, I think we can spend, uh, time to, uh, have a, a, an investigation, have a, uh, uh, a, uh, a study into Latinx representation in the City of Santa Cruz, especially since we're talking of over twelve thousand, six hundred persons who are living in the City of Santa Cruz. Uh, so thank you for hearing my comments, and, uh, uh, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Our next member of the public is phone number ending in zero five two. Go ahead and unmute. Hi there. Yes, you are. You're very quiet, but we can hear you. Okay, thank you. I, our next public comment is phone number ending in one seven zero five.
Hi, thanks for taking my comment. Um, I think the big problem with maps one and six oh three are that they, they go all the way from Bay and Mission, really the heart of the west side, through the Beach Flats, all the way to the far east side, past By Harbor. So I don't think that there is anyone who actually lives in the City of Santa Cruz who would say that poses a community of interest. And I think it really grossly violates that, uh, that principle. I understand there's issues trying to make all, it, there's compromises with all the districts. When you move a part of neighborhood out of one district, it has to go to other districts, and all these rules. But I really think that District Four, and six oh one and six oh three are really out of line. And, um, even in six oh two, District Four is a little marginal, like, it's all the way from High Side, west side, through the end of the Beach Flats. So I think that six oh two is the best, three, but I still don't think, uh, because of District Four, I don't think it's that great. And, uh, there is a prior caller who said that the one was the best for, kind of, um, not diluting the vote of in-town folk from university. I actually don't think that is the, the best job of, kind of, uh, keeping the university together as a community of interest in, um. Yeah, so that's, uh, one comment. And then, uh, following on Councilmember, uh, Brown's comment about the university having a much lower registration rate, that's true, but that actually gives the university more power. And I have, um, corollary that kind of unique situation in Santa Cruz, because university is exempt from all municipal votes. So I wonder how that works, where the university could potentially get its own council member, would be voting to enact laws by every other district city except the district that they represented. I'm wondering if the demographer could, or the city attorney could comment on that, because it seems pretty undemocratic that, um, you could have someone elected by district who's deciding laws, someone else that applied. I know that's more relevant as the university almost basically has its own district, but I'd like to hear, um, some of the experts' comments on that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next uh, member of the public is named Dennis. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Welcome.
Hello, um, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
Um, I would like to comment about, uh, the lower west side, um, in both maps six oh one and six oh three. Uh, the lower west side is kept together as a district. Uh, I believe that the entire length of West Cliff and residential areas, uh, inland from West Cliff Drive, uh, share, uh, a sense of community in, in many issues. I believe that map six oh two, splitting, um, it in half, kind of artificially, between District Three and District Six, does not make sense. Um, District Three would extend from Lighthouse Field all the way up through, be close to the university on Nobel Drive. And I don't think that, uh, that has a sense of community or of a district. So again, I, I would support six oh one and six oh three because of the District Six, uh, boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is a phone number ending in two seven zero four. Press stars, unmute yourself. There we go. Hi there.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. Uh, yes, um, I, I, I'm just asking the demographer, is there any objective way of finding a neighborhood? I, like, listening to a lot of people stressing all different kinds of views about neighborhoods, and they all have different ideas. Uh, am I right in thinking there's no objective way? It's just that whoever, everyone has their own concept, and doesn't necessarily agree with many other people. And if that is the case, then it seems like growing of the district is a very arbitrary and chance, uh, process, which really doesn't mean anything as far as democracy is concerned. I'd like to comment on that, please.
So for public comment, we do not do Q and A. You have a full three minutes. Like, you, with your comment and, uh...
Okay, okay. Uh, that's, it's, I would think, well, I'm, I'm, it's unfortunate that that is, but again, that is the rule. But I think conversations are very, very educational, and people learn from them and their input. But I can't have that. I'd like to, uh, for, for a river, quite, that, uh, a proportional system allows to, uh, line up with other persons, uh, city that they agree with. So they are choosing their own, uh, or who's, I've come up with the idea of one neighborhood. You have and the, the chance of being equally represented. Uh, I'd like to keep it clear, uh, that, uh, having a district, especially in the way it's built now, not really conducive towards a district. Thank you for, uh, unmute.
Thank you. Our next caller is Benin Uliatikro.
Hi, I'm on one percent battery here, so excuse me if I cut out midway through, but I really wanted to express support for map six oh three, and also, uh, the draft map that a lot of campus pros, the seven district proposal, uh, really highly encourage those office speeches. And, and I really wanted to just comment on the narrative that students, uh, might have outside of the city, or, you know, have an, even though technically they aren't part of the city, but I think that, again, is the problem. Students are people, students are residents. I think we have just as much of, you know, a right to be represented as anybody else. And the fact that, you know, thirty thousand, uh, oh, sorry, twenty thousand staff back the, in UCSC, out of a city of sixty thousand, thirty percent, we haven't seen that kind of representation in a long time, is something really worth considering. So that's why we support six oh three and the draft proposals for, that really goes ahead and keeps the downtown together, keeps the lower west side together, and guarantee the east side is also fairly representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller, we're taking public comment on the six district map. Beverly Day Show.
Hi, this is Beverly Day Show. Um, I'm wondering, did I miss something in the beginning of this presentation? Like, why is this happening in the first place? Why are we suddenly breaking the city up into neighborhoods? And yes, I agree, you know, who decides what a neighborhood is? And there's a confusion here about that although you're not, what I understand is that you said not allowed groupings by interests, yet making them by neighborhood. So I, that's, excuse me, that's a bit confusing. Um, but, you know, why, why, why is this all of a sudden happening? Who decided this? Um, I don't like it. I don't like it at all. Um, it's, it's dividing up our city. And so is there someone or a group of people who are more knowledgeable than I, who are overseeing this to make sure that this is not a gerrymandering move? Um, really? Uh, let's see, so the other thing that I don't like is that now suddenly, person who is being elected has to live in the neighborhood. That's a very limiting thing. What if there, you know, what if there isn't anyone, the neighborhood is qualified or who feels like running? Um, who has the time, who's like, not working jobs? That's, you know, there's a, there's an equity issue here, I believe. I mean, really, for people who have time, okay, but for people who don't, then they don't get to be represented? I, you know, this is, um, I don't like um, yeah, so who's, who's overseeing to make sure this isn't a gerrymandering move? Okay, that's my two cents. Are you for? You?
Thank you for your comment. Uh, the next- Uh, the next name is Catherine. Welcome. Catherine, let's see, go ahead and press star six to unmute yourself or like unmute on your computer.
Hi, this is Catherine, and I need to say that you had called on me previously, and and so I was surprised that you called on me again. So, um, I I am the one who made the comment that, um, I didn't use the word gerrymander, but that's the feeling. That Upper West Side residents, uh, if you include two hundred homes of Upper West Side residents in with U C S C, uh, those residents are definitely going to feel gerrymandered. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller, I am watching you.
Yes, hello. Uh, I suppose on further reflection, I I expose six oh one map as my preference, but I could also see alterations starting with that that might have worked in census. Uh, you know, I tried using that map drawing application. Wow, that's too hard to use. Uh, I I question, just as a, just a statement, that Hispanic race has been ever been a factor in elections. Uh, you know, I have, I looked at like the last four elections and and I said this in my letter, I don't have to explain it all again. But really, people have been elected amazingly, or so, by how many people run with identical politics. And when the, you know, when one, like leftist or or leftist side people, when one side or the other has more people running, they lose because their vote is diluted. So I I don't know, uh, like I, I do not think that Maria, what is it, Calvinus or whatever, I don't think she lost because panic. I think she lost because she ran in a year when there were way too many people with her politics, you know? You check it for yourself. I mean, that's not, that's not hard to, uh, to do. And then looking at the, you know, how, yeah, composition of the council, it's, it's, it's not, you know, centered against minorities or anything. If anything, like I said before, I mean, white men are left out of the picture maybe, but that's all I can think there. Um, I, I would say I, I'm kind of disappointed it's too late now, but it, um, too late now, but I, I, the runoff thing, I just can't see needing it. I mean, only ten people ran the entire city last year. I can't see three people running in any of these districts to require a runoff. I, I, maybe, maybe one will and then that, you know, run up, but they have to run for a whole year, you know, to, uh, run during the primaries. I, I don't, I don't get it. Um, and, uh, well, I mentioned before about the two and four-year mayor thing, too late for that. But I think, uh, well, like, well, Joe Biden, I mean, boy, it'd be nice to have another election this November, don't you think? Anyway, um, I, I mostly, though, I would, in this meeting, if possible, please clarify the details of what happens to the existing council members with two more years to go on their term? And how you will decide which district vote, uh, in twenty twenty-two, once you pick them and why. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next caller is a phone number ending in two seven zero four.
Yes, uh, I find these as the last, uh, citizen, uh, problem that, that, you know, sometimes.
Having a hard time hearing you. You're cutting out.
Do you want me to unmute the mayor? He already spoke.
Oh, I see.
I muted him. I can unmute.
Yeah, go, go ahead and, um, unmute and go ahead caller.
Hello.
Hi there.
Hello again.
Already spoken? Calling earlier?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yes, I did, but I wanted to respond to, yeah, just the gentleman that spoke just before me now. Uh, his point is that, uh, both are diluted between a number of candidates who have similar, uh, ideas about what, what would be good for the city. Uh, the, that is definitely a problem, but voters may want to consider adoption of ranked choice voting, which largely solves that problem. Because voters can rank all those candidates that they want to. And then, uh, the one that will get the most vote from all those, all, all those, uh, people who like that kind of outlook, uh, they can concentrate their vote event in event. Their candidates, so their votes will be concentrated and they will have a better chance of electing at least one of those people they like. Where in the, in the current voting system, uh, they don't have that. So ranked choice voting for voting for one winner, uh, uh, makes, makes the situation a bit better.
So we are taking public comment on the six district map, uh, and this agenda item. And are there any other members of the public that like, that haven't already been commented? Okay. Looks like that's it. I will bring it back to council. And, um, there were questions that were brought up in, um, public comment that I would like to, um, ask staff or and or Doug Johnson. Um, to answer, um, one of the questions I could go ahead, there was a caller who said, why are we breaking the city up into districts? And I just want to direct that member of the public to the information on the city's website, cityofstancacruz.com/districtelections. And there is a wealth of information at cityofstancacruz.com/districtelections. Um, there was a question about what happens when there is no candidate that runs in a district. Are you able to answer that?
Sure, I'm happy to. It's just like any vacancy. Um, the council, the city attorney or staff, I mean, I don't know if your program has special provisions. Typically, council would decide there to appoint in application process, it was special, like, it was just like their big.
Thank you. And there was a question about what sides what a neighborhood is, what constitutes a neighborhood.
I guess there's a very in-depth discussion of that in the prior two hearings that folks can go back to. But very briefly, the law kind of blends the two ideas, but really there are two separate interests between what's a community of interest versus what's a neighborhood. So a community of interest is a, a little geographic defined area, but it's defined by demographic and social characteristics such as, it could be a, but it's more commonly renters, income levels, education levels. Big one is language spoken at home. And it can also be issue-driven. So a community, as the council member Cummings earlier about, a neighborhood is particularly hit by traffic in the summer. That would be, so those kind of laws specific about a, the social, economic or issue-driven group geographic area. A neighborhood is more self-defined. In some cities, they have formerly recognized neighborhood. Uh, the most common ones are are master plan communities or district. But other cities also have gone through and I formally identify neighborhood is those. But ultimately, a neighborhood is whatever the people in it find as a neighborhood. So if if people view their neighborhood as the area around the park, area around the school, anything that ties those neighborhoods together, um, meet the definition. It really is self-defined. There isn't a, uh, the census bureau does not define neighborhood, uh, for the whole country. Much more, whatever the residents view as their neighborhood is their neighborhood, and they may disagree or may consider those parts of.
And the last question I had was, um, a caller stated that the university would be exempt from uni codes. And how does that work, council member enacting laws that not apply to that?
I, I would briefly say that's not a concern, uh, the factors into district redistricting. And for more details, I'd refer you over to city staff for the city.
It is, it is correct that, um, city regulations in general don't apply to the university campus. But there are certainly issues that people who reside on the campus, uh, would, would be affected by, by decisions of the city council. And, um, and therefore have a very legitimate basis to weigh in on university or city policies. So, um, so there's not a legal impediment to somebody who lives on campus, uh, participating in city politics merely because, uh, city zoning regulations and whatnot don't apply on the campus.
Thank you. Okay, um, councilmember Cummings, do you have a comment?
I have, um, one question I wanted to follow up on, and I, I guess it's a comment to what, um, was just stated. In addition to that, um, people who live on campus aren't isolated, living on campus, they're going to freely move throughout the community. And given that campus is part of the city, uh, the fact that some laws or regulations don't apply to people on campus, that's not to say that campus is like island where people never leave. So just wanted to put that out there as well because, you know, if people are shopping in town or what have you, they're going to be subject to the same laws as people who are living in the rest of the community. Uh, but the question I did have, and I'm going to ask this again later, um, is, uh, follow up on one of the questions that was asked during, um, public comment, which was, given the outlay of maps, how will, um, the upcoming election for twenty twenty-two, given the options that we have? Because, um, like myself, so I now live, I used to live in the beach flats, I now live downtown, but, you know, that seat would be open. Um, there's potential to be a seat open on the lower west side. Um, I believe that, um, there's two sitting council members in District One, I might be wrong on that, and then there's one in two. So that potentially leaves, depending on the map, um, three to four seats that might be open. And so I'm just kind of wondering how that might work. Cause that came up in in public comment. I had that question as well.
Sure. Have, have addressed that. So the, the big picture of the governance, all this, is that the same number of positions on the council that are due right now to be up in twenty-two will still be up in. Uh, one of those, so with three, I mean, one of those may be taken by the mayor slot. And so if you had a six district map plus the mayor, there'd be the mayor plus two districts. If you had seven districts, it would, uh, three districts. If you have a six district map, then the other four districts would be up in twenty twenty-four. Um, actually both ways, you'll have four districts that will election, or the four who not will election. Give a little bit more detail, um, because there was a related question with the public about what happens, current council members are up until twenty-four. Would actually remain council members till twenty twenty-four. I mentioned there's no impact on your current term. And you would actually be at large, citywide, council member till twenty twenty-four. The rule is you represent whatever jurisdiction elected. So even in twenty twenty-three, if they, someone elected citywide in twenty twenty lines and leave, leaves a vacancy? That placement, either a special election appointment, would be a citywide vote. Cause you're filling the last year of that wide at large. So it, it does get, speaking in generality is about the rule, it can be hard to wrap your head around it, different scenarios. But, uh, but we will definitely walk through in detail, um, map by map. Couple of final map. They, if, in some jurisdictions, it's really easy because one council member ends up in each seat, so that each district just gets assigned to that council member here. Uh, as you can see on these PDFs, every map has some pairing of, of council members who are in separate years, and that gets very complicated. We'll spend a lot of time talking about that, or yours. Does that help?
It helps a little. It's, it's still a little, but I guess, yeah, it's a little confusing, um.
I wonder the maps that, um, are on the city website show proposed election sequence and alternative election sequence. And it lists each council member and what they would begin for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-four. And that was really helpful to me. See, I'm not seeing that on this slide. Um, however, those, um, draft map, zero ones, growth, growth, do you show, um, current council members, proposed district and, uh, um, election?
I can show one of those if you'd like me to bring up.
That might give a good visual.
Just to show an example here, this is six oh three. Um, all of them have the language in the bottom left. Uh, as a six district map, it'll have the mayor plus seats up this year. Um, cause in this map, council member Cummings is the only, only twenty twenty-two council member who's alone in the district, not paired with any other council member. Four, the District Four would definitely, yeah. Then District Three is the vacancy, so while District Six has, uh, a mix of council members. So the difference between the proposed and the alternate, and then, and and I should clarify. There's no policy preference for the proposed over the alternate. Uh, a poorly worded law says must show a proposed election sequence, so we just had to pick proposed on one of them. But there's no, it's no better than the alternate. And the proposed sequence, the vacant seat is up in twenty twenty-two, and then the seat that has twenty twenty-two members and twenty twenty-four members is up in. Seeing the alternate that flips, that vacancy moves to twenty twenty-four with, um, the districts that only have twenty twenty-four council members. And the mixed seat moves to twenty-two. So that's kind of walking through the reason that seat quit, which is from one scenario to another, that seat has twenty twenty-two council member in it? And it has a twenty twenty-four council member. So the council will have to wrestle with which is the better year. Uh, where there's only one council member, of course, the seat just gets a. The kind of impact of this, is, I mean, there's obviously lots of interest on. If a, if a council member who's a current term ends in twenty twenty-two, ends up in a district that doesn't come up for election till twenty twenty-four? This will be that council member's last, they'll leave when this term ends, there's nowhere for them to run. So they would leave and they'd have to wait years and then come again. They'll leave when this term ends, there's nowhere for them to run, so they would leave and they'd have to wait years and then come again. On the flip side of a council member whose term is up in twenty twenty four. Ends up in a twenty twenty two seat. That council member has a choice. It's um. The council member could just serve the rest of this term to twenty twenty four. That they they're entitled to that and then in twenty twenty four leave the council. Cause they would resign as he's not up. The other option, and this is the twist that rarely happens, but I'm aware of it happening twice. The twenty twenty four council member can actually run midterm. Twenty twenty two, as if running for state assembly. And if the council member wins that seat, they're sworn into the twenty twenty two district. And they resign the last years of their at large seat, leaving two year at large. First, they'd be running against another council member who's term ends in. But often that's the way it goes because at least it gives each council member the option to run. No one is forced off without the option. I do often emphasize that if you end up in that scenario, we we hope that everyone will will keep the election civil. Cause if the twenty twenty two council member wins, twenty twenty four council member is still on the council for two more years. He would actually end up sitting next to the person you just ran against on the dais, so we hope that they will keep that though. Professional on the issues and not end up with the hostility that spills over to. But as I mentioned, that doesn't usually happen. Usually one or the other doesn't run again, but we are aware of two situations where someone has run midterm in that.
That's a follow up question. At what point do we kind of set out those provisions of how we're gonna set up the election? I mean, I I guess a lot of that depends on the outcome June um with whether we go to six or seven. But then at the same time, yeah, just kind of curious like when, because this is something we need to prepare for now in terms of all these different scenarios. So I'm just kind of curious about you know how that's coming along and what we're kind of doing as a city to prepare for different types of alternatives and options around elections.
I believe and and Casey and and the attorney jump in if I if I mistake this, but I typically the would need to determine the once at the time that you choose the map, you'll be needing to choose the sequence for your six six district map. And need to choose your sequence for your seven district map. So as as you know, sometimes this can be an issue with um that factor in which map is is selected and that is certain. Allowed in an appropriate policy.
Solid on that Doug, and our hope is that we'll resolve the map and sequencing in the near future. Not not out closer to the uh ballot.
I know we have another series of maps, so I'm gonna hold rest in my comments because some of them apply to. I'll just I'll in my comments there and I have more to say. Round of questions.
Uh okay, council member Myers.
I have a question about this, the uh sort of how the proposed election sequencing, um maybe for Tony. Um for for um uh Doug. My understanding is that we have, so we have to, we will be doing an ordinance to adopt districts. Do we also at the same time adopt? If is that that an actual ordinance action or is that out of those two? Not sure who who maybe Doug.
Yeah, Tony, go ahead unless you want me.
Yeah, I I mean, I think that it's contemplated that that would be part of the ordinance.
Okay, so that's where that's that's where that sequencing comes in, Tony, so you would you would adopt.
Right.
And then you would also define the sequencing to begin in twenty twenty two. And can that sequence ever be changed by a vote of the people? For a charter amendment or something?
It could be changed by a charter amendment or by um, well, I'd have to research whether it could be changed by subsequent ordinance. But I think once it's set in, once it's established, the intent is that it would remain in that sequence going.
I think that my one comment would be stability is always the best uh soon would be would be the best policy for uh for this kind of major change, so thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, we we worked with one or two jurisdictions that have for various reasons, mainly because they're adding seats, needed to alter the sequence a little bit. And as we mentioned, you can't alter the term of someone that's already in office, so you end up. The only way to really alter it is a vote and you have to do a two year term. Uh so to change the sequence of a seat, you're holding an election for a two year seat and goes back to four year seat after that. Someone would have to run and run again. So it it is very difficult and and your point of stability very destabilized. But in your cases, you look at having two seats, if if you go with the mayor option, two seats plus the mayor and then four seats. You ever wanted to try to get that to three, would happen that?
Just wanna apologize to my colleagues and public and to the mayor. Um unfortunately, I have to jump off. I will try to come back in, but I do have to jump off. Learn a little bit about what the governor did today with the executive order on water, so I'm sorry tactfully, but uh gonna get all the way. I'll try to come back in though. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Myers. Okay, so we received the presentation. Council member Cummings.
Sorry, I did have one more question. I realized that the next item, since it doesn't deal with the direct like mayor, that it wouldn't be appropriate for me to ask this question at that time. So um the one question I did have along the lines of direct like mayors, did that pass? Does that mean that the council would have to have the direct like mayor during this election cycle? Or would there be the opportunity or the option for them to choose to have the direct like mayor happen during presidential election years? Just given that in non-presidential years, there's lower voter turnout and then in presidential years. And so it might make sense that if we're gonna move with a direct like mayor, that that would happen during a year when you'd have higher voter turnout. I'm just curious whether um if that were to pass with with that charter amendment, then kind of restrict to the election of the 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 directly elected mayor to being in kind of non-presidential years. And I don't know if that's the the city attorney.
I I guess unless Doug has an answer to that, I'd ask you to hold that thought because um I didn't review the proposed charter amendment uh bearing for this, so I I want to take a look at that to see if that specifies when the first election of the directly elected mayor would be. Uh but if it doesn't, then I believe that the council would have some uh authority to make that call when you adopt.
Thank you.
Okay. And so we received a presentation from city's demographic consultant, demographer. Uh Doug Johnson, National Demographic Corporation regarding the draft six district maps and election sequencing. Um and received public input on the draft map election. Um we will now move on to our next agenda item after a five minute break. So we will return in five minutes and then return to the next item on the agenda. Turn on your cameras. Welcome back. Thank you for that. Short break, we will continue with our next agenda item.
Uh before you go there, Mayor, um I do have an answer to council member Cummings' question. Yeah, the proposed charter amendment does contemplate the mayoral election occurring in twenty twenty two. Uh it doesn't expressly require it, but it does um does state that for the purposes of the election of a mayor and council members in the year twenty twenty two. For timing reasons, only one round of elect will be held, et cetera, et cetera. Um and so uh my interpretation of the charter amendment is that it it would um you know, if the if the election uh charter amendment passes and if the vote is certified by the July sixth deadline, then there would be a mayoral election on in November of. Yeah. Um I also just wanted to ask if council, I think it might be appropriate if council members have opinions on the maps that have been reviewed or on changes that they would like to that you would like to see made to any of the draft maps that have been discussed. Um it might be uh useful to get that feedback so that we can bring that back to the council when you meet again on the nineteenth of April.
Yeah. Okay. We will, oh, council member Cummings.
I have a question. Tony, is that in addition to what we've, I mean, if we've already kind of expressed some changes we want to be, are you asking that we send follow up emails with that in writing or any additional?
Sorry, I I suppose you could send follow up comments, but I think it would be useful to give in some limited direction to um to staff and the consultants so that we're not going back and preparing a multitude of additional maps. So if the council has a preference, uh even if it's a preference for, you know, some people commented on liking um the east side of one map and the west side of it. Council, you know, wanted to give any sort of direction or by consensus um indicated preference, it would be appropriate to that now.
Uh it sounds, it sounds like um more specific direction based on the questions, comments. For example. Black Ocean Corridor, the lower west side and Seabright area. Um two, so um. Now it seemed like there were three considerations um really focused on for um additional map draft. Um and whatever that looks like in terms of all the requirements, population, um equality and all the other requirements. And is that, are you looking for more specific direction or?
I guess I would defer to Doug on that question um if he feels like he has some direction or or to staff. Uh some ideas about what how how we might modify maps or what we should bring back and focus on for the next.
Yes, I think the, you know, the three you just mentioned, I I think were just the kind of thing we're looking. Uh I think those three are sufficient for those goals, but um the city attorney is trying to make sure there wasn't that another thought that someone had. Mine. Had been applied.
Thank you. I think um uh council members, if you receive any other input um as soon as possible to uh send that on addition to those three. And I know Doug would appreciate it in order to have draft map crafted and posted at least seven days for our next public hearing.
Mayor, if I might, just there's there's been a couple of questions about how do we guard against gerrymandering or things like that and this point of certainly welcome any thoughts. The way we handle messages that come in outside of a public meeting is that we would come back and say, here's the map that implements a request from council member X. So we continue to have that full transparency, um even if it's a thought you have tomorrow or the next.
Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, um are we ready to move on to the next agenda item? Like we are. Next up on the agenda is public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the selection of a seven district map and election. For members of the public who are streaming this meeting, if this is an item that you would like to comment on, now is the time. Call in using instructions on your. The order will be a presentation of the item from staff, followed by questions from council. We will then take public comment and then return to council. Sure, to hear, are you um here and to translate that?
Sure, I will. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I will now hand this over to our staff, P C E Martin, demographer Doug Johnson with National Demographic Corporation. Welcome back.
You're up Doug.
Sounds good. I have a shorter presentation without all the introduction stuff. But just as briefly, we still have the same federal date requirements. The rules are the exact same depending on whether or not you're drawing six or seven, and then the traditional criteria are the same. Um obviously, uh because we're drawing seven districts now. Sixty three thousand people in the city have not changed. So where with six six districts, district aim to be a little bit over ten thousand. For seven, we're aiming to be right about nine thousand, so each district is a bit smaller, we had seven districts. And so as was somewhat previewed in some of the public comment, um it is possible now to draw a purely university district seven. As you see in map one oh one. And then actually to the the point that council member Cummins was making about uh district map. This case, our district four crosses the river, puts puts the the two sides of the river together. Uh that largely happens because district two is smaller, so it does not extend other than right at the the water, it doesn't all the way over the river. We still keep a northeastern kind of both sides of the freeway, just one. Um get a much more concentrated uh district five, their west of drive and above that. And then uh over on the west side, one oh one, there's again that western district we saw earlier. But now because it's smaller, it does not extend up into the universe. So and then in this one, you get the university, as I mentioned, all in. District seven is all university and then three is really the the uh northeast side of Bay Street mixing university. That's map one oh one. Map one oh two can rotate, that again, instead of having three districts on the on the water, it says two. And this is a little bit of the idea that we talked about earlier about shifting those two, that now you have district four on the water. District two is kind of inland. Uh you can see it jogs a little bit up and down, but really oral and point of vista are the two boundary roads. Uh also tried to show a different approach to district one, where instead of it being, well, that's the whole freeway corridor. This map, um districts one and three get considerable freeway area. That means that district one comes farther south over on the side of town. So along Frederick Street, that neighborhood becomes part of district. Um six, seven is still university dominant, it's a little bit different. Really, one thing we always try to do in these maps is give you a variety of options. There aren't a lot of ways to draw that seven. There aren't a lot of ways to draw that seven without getting fairly whack how it ends up. So this one's slight changes, but given the population, there's not a lot of variety. And then over the west end of town, you can see again, we, this one takes a very different approach of rotating five and six. So that six no longer comes down to the water, it just goes road. Five takes the whole ocean. The third and final one. This is the. The look at, can we draw, even in seven districts, could we have two seats that are in the university? So this would show how we get two seats in the university. Really, the goal of the difference is to prompt that question we were discussing earlier about. Different communities might benefit from being in one seat, or might benefit from being in multiples. They want to show an option that would clearly eat all the rules, but still have two seats first. So you get that in this map, really Bay Street running. Changes names up farther in north, but Bay Street comes to define back to left. Seven does then, because it's not all university, then does come down Bay Street into non-university neighborhoods and pick up population. Get six, and in this case, now because seven's coming out and get population, six becomes that L shape around it. Then five, this is similar to the six oh two map, right, where you saw it going from Cliff Drive up, in this case, all the way up past. And in this case, we get a, again, that horizontal two and four, but a different configuration, and people thinking about and wondering about. What really are the, the boundaries that make sense over there on the side of town? A lot of flexibility there, as long as we're making trades that are equal in population, can shift. Use Broadway or go all the way to Frederick, use Wyndham, those kinds of things are possible. So perhaps even more than the six district maps, these three seven district maps or concepts designed to start the discussion and get your reactions. The other thing I should mention is that I, I don't have it in this presentation, but it was mentioned by. Someone from the university called in earlier, there was a, there is a map that's come in that they sent in and asked. Could we take a glance at it and see if it looked like it was legal? Which Casey and I worked together and we got back to them on that. It wasn't clear at that time whether they wanted it posted yet, or if they were just getting that back. Now that it's been mentioned in the previous hearing, we will post it.
And Doug, I also want to mention that was included in the attachments to the agenda package, that, that map. And there's specific feedback in the demographic data that you generated, that's part of the package that the council received.
So it's gone to council and it's on the agenda page for this meeting, and we'll get it up. The only reason it isn't. Wasn't sure whether they actually wanted it. Now that they proposed it, we'll serve. So same questions this time of which maps prefer and among your preferred maps, what would make them even better? We have that same slide.
Thank you. Let's see, we had. Questions and a lot of comments already come in through the interactive. Site, which thank you, that was really helpful to read through and it seems that I, it was over seventy percent. Preferred map one zero one. Over the other two. I will see if council members have any questions. Vice Mayor Watkins.
I don't think I have any questions, I think it kind of, we got a, a lot of the bigger questions earlier for me, so thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Holder.
I haven't had time, I, I, yeah, I don't have any questions this time.
And then councilmember Brown. Have any questions?
Don't, I'll, I'll just save my comments for after.
Councilmember Cummings, do you have any questions on these maps?
Not so much questions, I do have some comments on the maps, so I can either say them now or wait.
Okay, let's, let's go through questions. Councilmember Calentari Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, also no.
It, I will take it out to public comment then for these seven district maps, their draft map. If you weren't interested in commenting on the. Seven district map and election points item, raise your hand either by calling, by dialing star nine on your phone. Or selecting these hands in the webinar controls of your computer. When it is your time to speak, you will hear an announcement that you have been unmuted. The timer will then be set eighty minutes. I will go out in the, and I see hands raised, and the first name is Dennis. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening. Map number one oh two, for the west side of the streets, I believe truly reflects communities. It keeps all of the lower west side together along West Cliff, then the upper west side together, our city together. I think map number one oh three for the west side is a disaster. District five in this map goes from Lighthouse Field up to Heist, and that is not, that is just not a. Also, housing along Columbia Avenue in the lower west side. One side of the street would be in one district and the other side would be another, and that is a very, very arbitrary delineation. So at least for the west side, I think map one oh three is terrible, but west side, in my opinion, map one oh two reflects. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next. Is phone number ending in row two five two. Comments on seven district map. Go ahead and press star. Yes, you are welcome. Thank you. Let's see, I have a caller ending in one seven zero five is the number. And we're taking public comment on this agenda item, seven district map.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. I think map one oh one by far is the best of these. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, I think map one oh one is the best of these, I want to revisit my comments on the six. Maps, I mean, this is related even more so with seven districts regarding the university district, and my comment was completely misconstrued. I, I absolutely believe that everyone deserves to represent on council. My point was, in certain areas such as land use planning, housing. And housing, universities completely exempt from municipal control, but it seems really unfair and democratic. That a representative of a single district that is completely exempt from municipal control would have a vote. In determining what goes on in every single district besides its district it represents. So here's the example, the resident front. Vote client. Relocation payment for. Just cause rank control, all these things. A representative that represented exclusively the university, be able to vote. To implement in every area of the state except for the district which it represents, which that representative, that council member represents. I think, of course, I believe everyone should have a vote, everyone should have a representative on council, but it'd be some process where. Either the university agrees to reject itself, those fiscal ordinances, or that council member has to refuse for issues where its own district was exempt. So please don't misconstrue what I'm saying, I do believe that everyone deserves a representative.
Okay, thank you for your comment. It looks like that will conclude our public comment on the agenda item of seven district map. There was, I will bring it back to council. And I did want to ask a question for maybe staff. There was a, or a comment or a question regarding someone who was not able to navigate the technology to see the map. Have there been in person or other options available for community members to access that?
Absolutely, we, thank you, Mayor Brunner, we have had the maps publicly available in multiple locations, including London Nelson and the library. I am also happy to facilitate getting our, our, our local citizen a, a set of the maps. And whatever resources they need. So I, I, I will, I want to make sure that whoever wants to understand this has all the resources.
Thank you so much. Okay. All right, so at this point, we have now your presentation on the seven district maps. And we didn't specify the, or discuss the election. On these maps. Doug Johnson, I wonder if you can just briefly speak to that aspect of that.
Certainly happy to. Ends up being very similar. Number of picks each up. Up each year is a little simpler because there's no mayor question, so it would be three, seats will be up in 2022. And four seats will be up in 2024, let me share very briefly. The PDFs if people can. For example, this is map one oh one. The one thing that happens in one oh one that I don't think happened in any of the six district maps is that we have two vacancies. So you can see for one oh one, proposal is, the pose versus the alternate, we have two vacancies. So that could, their way, one of those vacancies would be up in 2022. The other one up in 2024, that would be completely up to public comment. And the council's ultimate decision to say, does it make more sense for district, in this case, six or seven? Up in twenty twenty two for the proposed election. Factors that could play in there, I think we're already touched on a little bit. If a district is traditionally low turnout, then we, we tend to recommend putting that on the presidential year. So that there's more voters turning out in that election, so that can be one factor. The, the only legal guidance on that is to see, to come up with a sequence in line with the goals of the California Board of Directors Act. So. If you had a vacancy, it was heavily Latino or another protected class. That didn't have a council, you know, historically was not represented, didn't have a council member, that would. You know, that actually is an interesting challenge, if you want that seat up right away, so it gets legislated as soon as possible. Or probably more likely want that seat up in a presidential year. The reason for that, even though it would mean waiting a little bit, is that this decision, as we talked about earlier, is permanently. So getting someone elected two years sooner. Probably isn't worth being in the low turnout election. Whereas if you put it in a presidential year, get that, get that. I don't know that that really plays in here as much, but I leave that to you, your discretion in the end, to say six versus seven would. If you went with those like. If you flip that, then where the, the district five that has multiple council members in it, then the two vacancy cap. As you go through the different maps, there are different options. But all the options are out, the three seat. Four seat.
Thank you. All right. That. Very helpful to see and hear, thank you. I'm just taking my notes here, okay, I'm going to bring it out full. And councilmember Calentari Johnson.
Thank you, I, I have a question, are, are the six district maps, the seven district maps, are they aligned? If there's one sort of map, I mean, I know obviously there's one with six and one with seven, but are we trying to like do the groupings of neighborhoods similarly? Questions?
Sure. They aren't really aligned, there's no, there's certainly no correlation between maps. It may be useful for me to briefly show the interactive map, because that's the easiest way to compare the map. So that just so people are prepared with what it can do. Um, so that just so people are prepared with what it can do. Um. There we go. So in this map, you have all the maps over on the right hand side. And you can click and change from map to map, obviously. And you can even enter an address, you can zoom in. You know, you can also, a little odd name, but if you change the base map gallery, click on that option, can change to a satellite as well. If you, if you get in, that's often if you really wanna see where the lines are, that. But to your point, um, you can compare the maps by setting, by turning them on together. So, I mean, I. So you can see the differences between one oh one and one oh three are where there are lighter colors, where the colors stay bright in that map. You try to compare one oh one to six oh one, you get some. So you can see district one is almost identical both. Here's the extra thousand that it gets.
Mm hmm.
So this is a handy way to compare maps and where do they map? And then the lighter colors are where they. There's definitely some similarities between one oh one and six oh one, uh, but then, um, but that, that's probably the most useful tool. That's linked on the city's project website. Um, and if, well, this, I'll send this PowerPoint, oh, I, uh, this PowerPoint will go on to the website. I just sent it about an hour ago. It's not there yet, but, uh, people can get the link through that as.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Cummings.
I did wanna follow up. There was a question from a member of the public related to ranked choice voting and how that might be able to suffice the, um, issues with the California Voting Rights Act. And so I'm wondering maybe if the city attorney might be able to comment on that question that was asked. You know, rather than moving into.
Sure.
Central for first voter.
That, might as well talk about both issues. Um, it is correct that the Santa Monica case is pending before the California Supreme Court. Um, and if the California Supreme Court, uh, upholds the decision of the Court of Appeal, then that might have a bearing on whether or not, um, the city is legally obligated to transition to, uh, district elections. Um. It, but it, it wouldn't necessarily mean that the city is immune from liability on the California Voting Rights Act. Um, each, you know, as, as you're aware, um, vast majority of cases, in fact, I think, Santa Monica is the unique exception. Um, cities have either capitulated or, or lost, um, most Voting Rights Act challenges in California. Um, there is a, uh, print of the court brief filed by the Attorney General in the Santa Monica case in which, um, in which the Attorney General makes a statement that, uh, alternative forms of, uh, of elections such as ranked choice voting could be an alternative to district elections. Um, the, the problem is it, it is not a, it's not a legal precedent whereby a court has ordered a city to transition to, to ranked choice voting. So there's a little bit of risk associated with that. And of the remedies that might be available, um, district elections is the only one that is actually specified by, um, the California Voting Rights Act. Although, um, as I said, arguably, an alternative mechanism like ranked choice voting could, uh, address a Voting Rights Act, uh, lawsuit.
Can we just add to that too, when practical, it is, while your Latino percentage is almost identical to Santa Monica's, um, Santa Monica does have three Latinos on it. So it's a, you know, I think there's gonna be a, if Santa Monica does prevail support, I think there'll be a lot of people that say yay, and then they'll read the decision and realize it doesn't help. So it will be, it's not so much if Santa Monica wins or not. Does Santa Monica win and on what basis do they win? They will forever. And, and to, just as Senator Green was saying, the, from, from my practical perspective, if you're in districts, they can't sue you. The CBRA is a safe harbor. If you have an alternate system, they can sue you and it might be a successful defense, but you still have to pay for it in mouth.
Thanks. And then, um, I had a few comments, um, similarly, I'm wondering if the maps up as well.
Sure.
So it's, um, similar to what, um, individual, well, one, uh, one oh one seems like, you know, in terms of some of the issues we've heard around Seabright, um, that it kind of addresses that along with some issues with, you know, the beach flats and lower, lower ocean, although it could also, you know, shift a little bit further south, have more of that ocean corridor, um, incorporate into district four. So if there's a way that that might be able to come forward, it would be good to see what that option could look like. Um, just because again, from demographic, socioeconomic perspectives, there's a lot of similarities in people who live from the beach flats all the way up to that ocean corridor. And it might be a reasonable voting block in terms of trying to keep those people together. Um, but at the same time, you know, when the person who called in about map one oh two with the west side, lower west side and the upper west side kinda staying in their own areas, it makes sense as well. Those are pretty contiguous neighborhoods that have shared interests. I, I would say also with number one oh three though, that, um, one of the benefits is one, one of the members of the public pointed out that students do make up thirty percent of the population in the city of Santa Cruz. So having two representatives on the council could be a benefit. And with the map in one oh three, it also allows for if students wanna move off campus, that there are places where they can move to in the city that wouldn't keep them restricted to kind of that campus area like they do in one oh one and one oh two. Um, at the same time though, that by sharing, um, that broader space, there is the potential for students to not be elected because they're then competing with people who have, um, more access, access to financial resources. So, um, just wanted to put those comments out there on the maps. Um, and then, um, in addition to that, um, I, it would be good, like, thank you for also showing the online tools. And something that might be worth adding to those layers is the socioeconomic map with kind of percentage of renters and also the demographics map. So that people can see that as you kind of overlay where these districts are, they can see how that impacts where, um, both different socioeconomic classes and also different demographics live within those areas. Um, and then the last comment I wanna make is that, you know, I think one thing that people might not be aware of is that there's nothing legally binding us to going towards district elections. And I think one thing that's, um, you know, within the language that's been put on the ballot is that it's a little misleading because it makes people seem as if, that we either go to six or we go to seven. But since we're giving the community an option, there really should be an option on the ballot of that we don't go to districts and that we, they, the people fight. And I think there's good reason why, uh, we should give people that option. Because, um, with one of the comments that was just made, um, by the demographer, you know, Santa Monica has three Latinos on their city council, but we also had history Latinos run, won. So David Tarazza's, he terms on the city council, he also served as mayor. Um, and, you know, he was elected in twenty ten and in twenty fourteen, so elected twice very recently. Um, we have the past few elections, um, four African Americans who have run and who have also won. That happened with in twenty sixteen, we had two African Americans run in twenty twenty who both won. And then we had another African American who, uh, two African Americans who ran in twenty twenty and also won. Uh, we have our first Iranian representative, one in twenty twenty. We have six women right now in our city council and one man. So there is, or, and, and well, six, yeah, six women and one man. So there is an argument to be made that don't have racially polarized voting here in the city of Santa Cruz. And that should be an option as well. And one of the comments that someone made earlier as well is with the socioeconomic factor really playing a huge role, which, you know, even if we do move to district election, um, for low income community to run, it's really difficult. Because, and I'm just reverting to transparent California, when I was mayor in twenty twenty, I made forty one thousand dollars, forty one thousand seven hundred and twenty four dollars as mayor. And as a council member in twenty nineteen, paid twenty thousand eight hundred and sixty two dollars. So that socioeconomic factor is a really big driver in gonna run, uh, for office because it's extremely difficult for low income people in this community to run for office. So I just wanted to make those comments because, um, there are a number of folks, some of them called in, who really don't wanna see us go in this direction and just wanna help lift their voice in this conversation. Um, because that option is present in the ballot. Um, and I think that, you know, given the options we're providing, that should be something that on us, um, whether or not we wanna say no to, no to this. Like, those are all the comments I have on this and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, council member Cummings. Vice Mayor Watkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I just wanted to see if, if maybe Doug, you could clarify for us. But what I think your point with the Santa Monica comparison was getting at is that the majority minority of that community does have representation on the council. Whereas in the city of Santa Cruz, majority minority, which is a Latinx population, doesn't have representation. And therefore there's a difference. Is that accurate?
Yes, you know, uh, uh, as your secretary will tell you, trying to guess what the Supreme Court's gonna rule is nearly impossible. And, and it's a little strange that the, we don't even have a hearing scheduled. Of course, we have no idea where they're actually. Um, but yes, you're correct. When, uh, in San, Santa Monica, not only do they have the arguably, if, there's a, a potential fourth Latino, depending how you define Latino on the council and an African American on the council. And the other twist there is that the proposed remedy district that the plaintiffs have asked for would put three, the three Latinos and the African American all in one seat. So there's a, the League of Women Voters has filed a saying, you know, dismiss this case. Not that they're not in violation of, not that they don't have polarized voting, but because the harm would be worse than at large, worse for, uh, protected class. So they, if, if that's the ruling, they follow that League of Voters request, that would be more or less useless for all the other cities. Um, because it's so Santa Monica. In which case, the fact that Santa Monica's Latino population is fifty, the citizen voting age population in yours is sixteen percent. So I can definitely see where people are thinking, hey, our demographic is the same, that really will apply to us. Uh, it might or might not. We, we really won't know a thing to get that ruling.
Council member Brown.
Mayor, uh, well, so to pile on with speculative questions, I guess I wanted to ask, um, you know, with respect, be, because the Santa Monica case came up, um, with respect to that. And, um, I imagine, and I, so maybe if those of you who are, are familiar, please, um, you know, share, um, I, I'm thinking that there's also a question about the number of candidates, like given demographics, and how many are elected. So like case of, if Santa Cruz sample, majority of Latino candidates have won when they've run. And not all. And so I, I, I'm gonna put it out there, I, I think that may be a factor as well. Your considerations, I've been here, the conversations that I've been in and think about this, uh, state newspapers, they, that there is a question about whether through evidence of racially polarized voting, has invited. Right? Because right now, all these claims are being made without any evidence. And so I guess that, say something about that.
I mean, I think this goes, this is the, uh, the ultimate point of what the attorney was saying earlier. Nobody has successfully defended themselves. And so we don't know where that bar is. When no one has left the bar, all we know is that we don't know where the bar is. Yes, you're exactly right. To the letter of the law, not just a numbers game. There should be proof of polarization. Us for voters or for candidates. But the, the very few cases so far have been all over the, how you measure it behind that. Just good pieces. And as was mentioned earlier, um, pieces are so expensive. Santa Monica won't say how much they spent. I've been estimating eight to ten million they spent on their case. I was told about two weeks ago that I was significantly, by someone in the know, that I was significantly underestimating much they've spent on themselves. So that's why, you know, all the points you've made, because council members have made, the public have made about different systems that could be legitimate are right. The problem is how much it costs to prove that in court. And one thing I should clarify on poll right, on ranked choice voting, um, till twenty twenty, all the jurisdictions in California that had ranked choice voting, had ranked choice voting in district. So San Francisco, Berkeley, San Leandro, Oakland, they all have districts and then they use ranked choice voting within district. Twenty twenty Albany is the first to go to, uh, ranked choice voting at large. And it's, it's not a, it's never had a voting rate. So there are the, there are other systems, there's cumulative voting, there are other varieties that, that would probably be better options. Ranked choice voting is the most common alternative, but it's used.
Thank you for that.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. No, I, I was just gonna say thank you for that because that was another question I was gonna ask about. So go ahead.
Uh, I was just going to point out that, um, while the council still has some work to do with respect to moving the seven district, uh, election process forward, as far as the sixth district, uh, issue, that is on the ballot in November. And so the California Supreme Court could do any number of things and that harder amendment will be on the ballot. So, um, I think the question of whether or not we should have, uh, district elections, I mean, I think that's probably been established by the council at this point. And the focus of this meeting is really intended to, to get council member preferences on the, on the map options.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Tony, for that. I, I, I was asking a question primarily, well, I, I just, I know, I think you know by now that I disagree with this process. Um, and I disagree with extortionist move to, uh, that, that brought us to this place. Um, but I was asked mostly thinking about, uh, what the potential factors were determining the outcome for the Santa Monica case and the extent to which they may apply here. Since I heard a question suggesting that, and I heard discussion that it wouldn't apply. And, um, while the political will with the council, it appears that ship has sailed. I am not going to give up on having the conversation about other systems that may be more representative, more democratic, and, uh, prevent the kind of vote dilution in, uh, our electoral, our, our winner take all, which will be even more amplified this. Take all. So, um, I just wanna say a couple of things. I, I don't have a whole lot of input on the configuration of the map. I think any map that we choose is gonna, some people will be happy with it and others won't. There isn't, there just isn't gonna, um, uh, you know, I, I heard people say, well, it's arbitrary. They're looking at the west side if there's a division they don't like, arbitrary. But it makes sense over on the east side. And then people from other part, you know, maybe with a different perspective saying, that's arbitrary over here. So that's just gonna be a challenge that we're faced as vision. And, um, so I don't have a, a whole lot of about, um, which map or strong feelings about really strong binding lines. Uh, with the exception though, I did wanna just raise point. Uh, with the exception, though, I did want to just raise point that um councilmember Cummings earlier and it's it's been discussed. My uh Mayor Brunner raised it as well, uh that we really ought to try to find a way whether we end up with a stick for both the map. Select make for six and seven to uh. Provide for lower, at a minimum, lower ocean plus. It in terms of the the demographics, that if we're really committed to addressing um the underrepresentation of our Latinx. Community, that would most effective way try to address that district setting. So I do think that that may take a little bit more to to figure the lines, but I think it's important that we look at that. Um, and then I would add, um, I I agree with the focus in right, that um that that's like. Being right together makes a lot of sense. Um, but uh the the one that I feel very strongly about is the. The ta is the lower ocean. Uh, I think there's a way that we can do that without disrupting rest of. And then in term, I just want to make one last comment. Um, uh, just following up on. About uh the trained realm of possibility that we are asking voters to consider. We're asking for that without a whole lot of context. I've had, got one uh member of the public. Showed up today and what is the, I like, what is going on here? Why is. Can reference uh website for info on that. The page is very well organized, a lot of documents there. And um I want to hard, uh especially for all of us trying to make this challenging process as accessible to the public. And and to and to an informative public as possible. Just it's a huge challenge. Um. So, you know, I I'm concerned about that and I I think we should. I I think the public should be able. Um, so on whether or not they want to have district elections, that a ballot initiative telling them, you're getting this. And oh, but you know, and you have a choice about whether or not it's gonna come with six districts or seven. Is, you know, it's a false choice, not really, not really democratic voters here. So um I'm gonna continue to share my perspective on that as this process. Um, I think I'll leave it there for today.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Callan Terry Johnson.
Thank you. I think Tony Caddi expressed what I was going to say, but I um, I think my colleagues make very good um points. On uh diluting votes. Um, and we are where we are. And my understanding is that that. We have conceded go that direction for all the reasons that Mr. Caddi um shared tonight and Mr. Johnson shared tonight. And I just want to make sure it's clear for those who are listening that what's for us right now is talking about the six district, seven district. Um, that's the decision that the council before I was on the. Um, made and that's the direction the city's going. We don't fall into a. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Goldar, any final uh comments?
No, I think that I, you know, I I appreciate everybody's work on this and it'll be interesting to see. If we, you know, end up going um just. The map that makes the most sense to me. Um, after, you know, analyzing them and taking into account people. Thoughts would be seven oh one, but you know, I could wait, like, I feel like still have a lot of. Work to do on that. Thank you.
Doug Johnson, do you have the direction you need for seven district map draft before that? Public hearing date?
Yes, although, thank you. Although I would add a logistical note, which is. Likely, given the requests that you made for us to draw, and I expect now that draft maps are out there, we'll probably get a handful of public drawn maps as well. At the next hearing, or we're likely to push fairly hard for you to narrow the options down quite a bit or perhaps select a map. So if there are thoughts you have uh or or comments you see from the public that you would like drawn. Uh, please forward those at the time you have those thoughts, so that we can get them posted and live and you consider them at the like next. Rather than waiting and then that means saying, you know, hey, I want, I'd like to see. So if you can ask us for those now, that that you can evaluate.
I would echo Doug on that. The the sooner we get that feedback and he can generate that, the sooner we can post it and make copies and get those out. So that people, so that you all in public can be in on that. So the sooner the better. And may I also add, Mayor Brunner?
Yes.
We have copies of the maps here at City Hall um and sets with the demographic data that are um. Nice, nice. And then I also have very large maps that are out in the lobby area that you can come and look at more closely. And if anybody would like to get any of the additional resources, I'd be happy to connect with you and they can reach me at. Eight three one four two zero five zero one nine, eight three one four two zero five zero one nine. That number's on our website, but you can also just try the city manager's office if you didn't get that number.
Thank you so much, Casey. I know that um there, you know, I share the same concern that was brought. Uh, forward as well regarding public outreach and engagement. And I know that um to date. There are many efforts to uh have community participation and um to get the the information out there. And having the the tools for everyone to kind of craft their idea of of their own district map representation. Um, so I know there've been, um, I believe, virtual and in-person meetings and um working with uh. You know, community organizations and really um um in in intentionally working with. Um, um, different community groups to get that information out there. So thank you. Um, again, uh, the the city website is the Santa Cruz dot com slash elections. Casey Imar. One four two zero five zero one nine. So much for sharing your information. Um, and we hope to uh. Have updated maps. Our next step will be updated draft map at our next public hearing, April nineteenth. And we will be narrowing it down to um those map options. And uh it will be interesting to see some of that of that data.
Here, and just a a date so the public is aware, the the maps for the night, considered on nineteenth, will have to be posted by the twelfth. Um, so we are hoping for those residents who want to try their hand at the online tool that's linked to the project site, if they can try to submit those by the seventh. Um, that it is a little tricky thing. They need to submit it time for us to process and post it. Hopefully, they can submit it at least by the end, by midnight, seventh process, posted time for you to consider it on.
So by April seventh. Okay, essentially a week, but you have to get the maps up there first.
Um, there, most, most of them are out there, the seven oh one ninety.
Just needs to add the UCSC generated.
Okay, thank you for, yes, okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you for that information. Thank you for being here this evening. Um, that does include this public hearing on both items night. You received input on the six district draft map and election win and the seven district draft map. Thank you so much. Meeting is adjourned.